Thank you. So, good evening. I'm President Judy Appel, and I want to welcome you all to the to the June 17th, 2020, meeting of the Board of Education of Berkeley Unified School District. And I'm going to hand it over actually to Ms. Chides, our clerk, to to make some announcements for all of you participants. Liz?
Yes, evening. Este mensaje sera repetido en español al siguiente. Siguiente mente. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear 30 minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning, we encourage you to stay at the end. To request to speak during public comment, click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the Raise Your Hand button. When called upon, you will be unmuted. After your time is up, you will then be remuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak during public comment. When called upon, you will be unmuted. Once your time is up, you will then be remuted. The board president will call our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please add a dash and an S, the letter S, at the end of your name. And once again, if you are a student who wishes to speak tonight, please indicate that you are a student by adding an S at the end of your name. And if there are a lot of people who want to make public comment tonight, not everyone who raises their hand at the beginning will get to speak. The board president will determine to set tonight's speaking time at two or three minutes per speaker. And on an individual basis, she also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will hear your time is up. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. There are really important issues that many feel very passionate about, but to hear from as many of you as possible, we ask that you please adhere to these guidelines. Thank you. Voy a proporcionarles un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de media hora será dedicado a comentarios de parte del público. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las 10:00, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón Participantes en la parte de abajo de su pantalla y seleccione el botón Levantar la mano o Raise Your Hand. Al ser llamado, le van a permitir hablar por dos o tres minutos dependiendo la dirección de la presidenta. Después del tiempo asignado, lo volverán a silenciar. Para comentar por teléfono, se les pedirá que levante la mano presionando estrella nueve. Al ser llamado una vez más, les permitirán hablar durante el tiempo asignado. Usualmente, la presidenta llamará a los estudiantes primero. So, si hay estudiantes en el público que desean proveer de comentario público, favor de indicar que son estudiantes escribiendo la letra E al final de su nombre. La presidenta también tiene la la autoridad de terminar si otorgará dos o tres minutos por orador. La presidenta tiene la discreción de otorgar tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, escuchará su tiempo sea acabado. Si todavía sigue hablando, termine su oración, pero favor trate de no sobrepasarse su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to go ahead and remind everyone, because you know, because you're on this, that our board, actually, I don't know if our board meetings are still on YouTube, but you can also catch a recording, you can also catch a recording of the meeting after it happens, I believe, on YouTube, but we have to check into that, actually. I have to check into that. So I'm now going to call the open session of tonight's meeting to order at 7:06. And like I said, closed session began at 5:05. So so we're not going to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion from anyone to approve the agenda?
I'll move it.
It's funny, this, that's so weird, because my little script here doesn't say that. But yes, we have to call roll. Thank you. Add that to the script, Liz.
We'll do. Director Julie Sinai?
Here.
Director Beatrice Leva-Cuttler? Director Khadija Brown?
She's going to come a little later.
Later. Director Estella Hemp? Vice President Ty Alper?
Here.
President Judy Appel?
Here.
President Appel?
Yes?
Director Leva Cutler is having some computer issues. She will be on as soon as she can.
Okay. I hear that. It's happened to me. And has anybody, any of the other board members been in any communication with Director Hemp or staff?
No, President Appel, I haven't heard from her tonight.
Okay, well, let's, I will, I will contact her, because I want to see if she's interested in leaving next week's meeting. We talked about this week, but I haven't been in contact with her either. All right, so now, Vice President Alper, if you will report back on on the closed session, that would be great.
I think I was approving the agenda, wasn't I? I mean, moving to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, Liz, you want to take a roll call vote?
Sure. Director Julie Sinai?
Yes.
Direct, Vice President Ty Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes. Okay, sorry, I even printed out the script, so I wouldn't mess up today, but it didn't happen. So now, we will report from report from closed session.
All right, thank you, President Appel. In item 3.1.1, collective bargaining, Berkeley Federation of Teachers, the board heard an update and gave direction. Item 3.1.2, collective bargaining, BCC-E, the board heard an update and gave direction. Item 3.2.1, there was a motion by myself as President Alper, seconded by President Appel, to approve the staff recommendation to make an appointment as the, to the coordinator of professional development position. The vote was four to zero in favor with Director Brown absent in the appointment. The motion was to appoint Adalita Martinez as the coordinator of professional development. So, Seid Superintendent Tiara, would you like to introduce Ms. Martinez?
Yes, my pleasure. Adalita Martinez comes to us from Alameda, where she has spent the past six years as a coordinator of language and literacy in ELD. Prior to her position in Alameda, Ms. Martinez was a PD coordinator, coach at both the district and site levels. Ms. Martinez began her teaching education in Oakland. When speaking to her references, they speak about her love for students and the joy she brings to inspiring adults to learn. Welcome, Adalita, to Berkeley Unified School District.
Thank you. And item 3.2.2, there was a motion by Director Sinai, a second by myself as President Alper, to approve the staff recommendation for an appointment to the principalship of Cragmont School. The vote was four to zero in favor with Director Brown absent. And the motion was to appoint Candace Cannon as the next principal of Cragmont School. She has a long history in the district, and I was telling my fellow board members that my wife was in her very first class. So she doesn't need much of an introduction to many people in the district, but Ms. Tiara, do you want to introduce her to those who don't know her already?
Yes, thank you. It's, it is with excitement that I announced the new principal for Cragmont Elementary School, Mrs. Candace Cannon, or otherwise known as Candy. Mrs. Cannon began her edu, has spent her whole career in Berkeley Unified, where she started off teaching out Malcolm X and is now currently the vice principal. For the upcoming school year, Ms. Candy Cannon will be the principal of Cragmont Elementary School. Congratulations.
Congratulations to both of you, and we look forward to having you onboard to work with us during this very exciting time. So now, I'm going to take just a quick moment to to go over the agenda for tonight. And it's going to be quick, because we really, really only have one main item that we're talking about. We are, you know, we have, we have a consent calendar, which is relatively short. And then, we're going to have, we're going to discuss the budget. So we're first going to have a discussion about the reductions that the staff is recommending for the budget. And then, we're going to have the first reading of the 2021 budget. And so, that's our whole meeting tonight. And I anticipate that it will, it will take a while, because we're going to probably have lots of questions to ask about, about the budget and particularly the reductions. So with that said, I am going to go ahead and move to 12.1, which is the public hearing for an approval of tier-one reductions for 2021. And I just, I think, I don't see Brent on my screen, but I'm sure he's on the next page. So, but I did want to tell you that what he and I talked about doing, how we talked about doing this item was, oh, hang on a second. Okay, is, is that, how we're going to do this now? I mean, this time, is Brent is going to, I think it's Brent, maybe it's Brent with some of his helpers, is going to present to us the recommended reductions. And I'm just going to ask, and he's going to do the full presentation. And I'm going to ask the the other board members, the directors, to just take notes if there's anything that you have a question on. And then, when you have questions and they get answered, if there's anything that you don't feel like should be part of the reductions. Because then, what we're going, I'm going to do at the end is ask for those items that you want polled from the vote. And then, we'll vote first on all of the items that we all agree on. And then, we'll vote on the ones that, that a member requested, if there are any, that a member requested be polled. And I notice here that we're only approving the tier-one reductions, but I believe that Brent is also, I think it's going to be Brent, I mean Superintendent Stevens, is going to go through both the tier-one and the tier-two reductions, because it's very helpful to have a full picture.
Right. President Appel?
Yes?
Do we need to do public comment first?
Oh, my gosh.
I thought she was just introducing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I am. I'm just, I'm introducing the agenda.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beatrice, because that is true. Before we do that, before we go into the action items and the discussion items, we first will have an opportunity both for public comment and then for unions to speak, and then representatives of any committees who are here, and then all of the board members and the superintendent. Okay, so I am going to go ahead and just go down the list of, excuse me, of public speakers that I have here. I have three, and then I'm sure, I'm assuming, oh, I have four. And then, I'm assuming that Matt Meyer is actually speaking as a BFT. So I'm, we have, we don't have that many speakers, so I'm going to give each of you three minutes to speak, except for the, you know, the unions have five. Go ahead, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, President Appel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I wanted to speak to last night's, or yesterday's, last week's board meeting now, and the director of facilities speaking to the Longfellow and I guess the whole school district budgets. And the fact that we spoke to, the fact that there were many opportunities to make comment on those budgets and that it had been a process. And I feel like that is one of the tropes that we speak to many times in the speaking to equity, that the black and brown community did not stand up and speak. They did not present themselves. They were not there. So we could only do what we could do, because there were other people speaking to their needs. I think that is, one of the biggest problems we have in this district is that I do understand that there are lots of people that have the opportunity to spend time coming to meetings and all these opportunities. And I think it is our job as those allies to speak for the fact that demanding black and brown voices in these meetings is not the way to go. And it is our jobs to stand up for the fact that not only are there not lockers at Longfellow, there are no gym walkers. So the kids walk around with clothes on their backs all day long. The kids run around on the sidewalk, because there's no place to run, and that's where they have to do their mile. At one time, back in the day, we were worried about school shooters, but we had all these kids out on the streets running around. It is your job to speak up to the director of facilities and say, no, this budget is not acceptable, and we will invest in this school that has had the least amount of investment, except for, yes, I agree, there was a cafeteria built, so the kids no longer had to eat in the basement. I will remind you again, this is a school that is 60% low-income, 20-some-odd percent African-American, and 40-some-odd percent Latino. Stop talking about people not saying enough. Stop talking about being fair and stop speaking, start speaking to equity. Start thinking about how we can make this school the best school for excellence that it can be. And this is an excellent opportunity, when there are huge budget cuts coming, to use this bond funding as a way to actually create equity when there are huge cuts that have to be made, yet there's an opportunity to spend large investments on the African-American and Latino community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schultz. Before I move on to the next speaker, who's going to be Mark Copeland, I did want to, oops, I did want to mention also that Director Leva Cutler has appeared, and I believe Director Brown also showed up. So we were just getting started, so that was the first public comment. Okay, so, Mark Copeland, why don't you go ahead?
Good evening. Good to see you all. You all look well. I wanted to address the, the naming issue, which you have as an information item tonight. And I know that a lot of you have looked at the board meeting from 2005 with the original discussion about Jefferson. And as a participant at that time, I was stunned myself to look back on that video, because I didn't remember much of it at all, the way it was. It was really a startling, startling revelation to watch it. And the real reminder to me that it brought was that it so much signifies the difference even here, in those 15 years. And I saw the, the, the process that, that has been sent to you, which looks like, like a good one. I think frankly, it's a good time to look at the naming of all of our schools. Our schools should be a list of, of places that kids know all about. And we could have a whole fifth-grade lesson plan dealing with the, the historic value of our schools. And I think to, to change the name is to change the name to be with the times. The fact is, is that there are a lot of things that Jefferson and Washington did historically that need to be recognized, and there are things that they did that don't. And 10 years ago, President Obama didn't agree with marriage equality. If he continued with that belief, we couldn't name one of our schools after him now, regardless of how much we love him. We would have a real problem with the fact that he would be telling our kids that they couldn't honor their parents. And so, there's a lot of factors, but I think the time is right. I love the direction you're going, and I really look forward to seeing what we come up with. And let's do imaginative, great names, not names like trees or things that just won't bother anybody, because that's not Berkeley. Thank you so much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Next, I have Anika Rogers.
All right, there I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I came last week. Thank you very much for bearing with me as I get used to this process. I realized that it's not a place to ask questions. I asked last week about transparency, about what the process was for reopening our schools. I come back this week, because I just think it's very important that we all understand it. There's not that much time left, and it sounds like we're going to have to make really big changes. I really want to know, and I, I hope somewhere on some website we published what research is being considered, what data from other countries is being considered, and how the risk of the COVID transmission is being weighed against other risks, mental health risks. You know, concerned about teen suicide here with all of the isolation. So, the other thing I didn't mention last time, because I really didn't want to be critical. I'm sure you have so much criticism. But, you know, distance learning really didn't work. I'm sure that's not the first time you hear about it. So many parents that I talked to agree. And that is really why I'm so concerned about that being a part of our plan in the upcoming school year. I heard that it really didn't work for kids that were unengaged in school, and it didn't even work for the kids who are really engaged in school. In fact, my son is a junior, was a junior at Berkeley High, only really had three hours where he could learn anything per week, and that's just not enough time. And it's really not serving equity either. So I just think it's a very difficult thing to learn to do, and that we shouldn't rely on it. And that frankly, I would rather just close the school and have other ways of learning, you know, enroll in online courses, online schools than, than to have more of that. So I really don't want to go there. I, I don't want to waste the time of the kids. So, but I understand that safety is the primary concern. The, the thing I do want to just repeat is that, that COVID is not our only risk here, and I really want to understand how mental health is being compared with the risk of COVID. I'm a little concerned that, that perhaps the latest research isn't, isn't being used, and we, we're, you know, fearfully outweighing that risk of COVID transmission. I know physical, the physical distance recommendations are, you know, incredibly difficult to deal with. I just can't even imagine how you're going to try to reorganize school with these physical distance constraints. And I'm wondering if there's recent research about masks that might make that a little bit easier. Is there any way, if we look at the most recent, recent information, that we can have more kids, you know, sitting in the classrooms more like we did before, wearing masks? And also, you know, the budget cuts on top of all of that, like, we need more budget, not less. And so, I completely understand what an impossible situation you're in. Though really, in conclusion, I just ask for transparency. I sort of want to see a plan for a plan, because there's so little time. And I, I want to know that we have enough time in what we're doing to make a good plan, because it's, it's just so important to us. I mean, missing a
Rogers, can you please just wrap up, because
I am, in fact.
Okay, great.
Worked out perfectly. Yeah, so missing like a year of schooling, when we take into consideration, you know, the spring also, is just really, would cause irreparable damage for our kids. So that's, that's why I'm coming to you, learning about this whole process, and thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Next, we have Marguerite Tally Hughes, who's one of our teachers. Ms. Tally Hughes?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I'd only have two minutes, so I can add something at the beginning. I'd like to thank Mark Copeland for working tirelessly to make the primary source of the videos of the school board meetings in 2005 available on YouTube. He worked really hard on that, and I gave him a VHS tape that was 15 years old, and he made it work. Thank you, Mark, because that information is important. If there's, I sent it out to a lot of people. If there's someone who doesn't have that information and would like it, I can be emailed at my school. It's not Marguerite Tally Hughes, it's just marguerite tally@berkeley.net, and I'll make sure that you can have the links to those, that information. So now, I'll go with my prepared thing, which is, I am speaking tonight representing myself, as well as Miriam Abrams, Lori Baumgarten, Imani Karpowicz-Smith, Patricia Smith, and Beverly Theo. We want to thank the school board and the current Jefferson community for giving thoughtful attention to the injuries sustained by the members of the 2005 Jefferson Sequoia community, when, in an unprecedented act and abuse of power, that 2005 school board refused to ratify the democratic process which chose the name Sequoia. The values we were raised with of respecting elders and remembering upon whose shoulders your current comforts, rights, and privileges stand would indicate that, regardless of the chosen process, the name Sequoia should be recognized for the school formerly known as Jefferson. We have had more than one person try to get us excited about the idea that a new process could lead to the choosing of a civil rights leader of Japanese or Native American ancestry. That sounds wonderful, but do we really need to look far for ethnically diverse civil rights leaders? The 2005 Jefferson Sequoia school community were and are civil rights leaders. They were and are a motley crew of students, parents, teachers, and classified staff. They were and are women and men, gay and straight, white, Asian, black, Native American, Latinx, Jewish, Muslim, and Gentile, old, middle, middle-aged, and young. This community came together, and they have been brave, and they have been persistent, and they have set in motion something huge, which is likely to have repercussions throughout the nation. They exemplify the Martin Luther King Jr. quote, "Everybody can be great, because anyone can serve." They are local civil rights leaders who can be collectively, collectively honored by affirming their chosen school name, Sequoia. It is so much more than a tree.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, Mimi, if it's okay with you, I'm going to skip to Imani Karpowicz-Smith, who I believe is one of the students that, that Ms. Tally just referred to. So if we can just go to Imani next, and then we'll go to Mimi.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm also here to talk about the Jefferson name change process. I'd like for this board to consider that conducting a new naming process for the current Jefferson school is in some ways just as harmful as the board's decision not to change the name in 2005. I really appreciate, and I'm happy to hear that the current board understands why schools in Berkeley should no longer be named after slave owners and wants to take action in making this change for our community. However, if you decide to go through a new voting process, that decision inevitably ignores the two years of hard work done by the black staff and parents of 2005. I was nine years old at the time, and I was in the room when the previous board made their ominous decision. There was a lot I didn't see and didn't understand then, but 15 years later, I'm aware of the abuse that my mother, my teachers, including Marguerite, and other members of the black Jefferson community endured through that process. Those adults were trying to make a safer environment for me and my black classmates. Changing the name now will surely do that for future children. But those who worked for the initial change did not deserve to be silenced. They did not deserve to be harassed, and they most certainly did not deserve to be called racial slurs in front of their children once the final decision was made. I'm not simply asking for a name. I'm asking that you all please honor what my community endured and right that wrong by ratifying their work with the name they democratically chose 15 years ago. Thank you.
You're muted, President Appel.
Thanks. I see that actually Anika took her name, took her hand out, so that's great. Mimi, why don't you go ahead? I don't know your last name. It just says Mimi here.
Oh, it's Mimi Pulich. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Hi, I am Mimi Pulich, and as the president of the Berkeley High PTSA, yesterday, I was asked if I had any input on a resolution to eliminate the school resource officer position at Berkeley High that was being proposed by two board members that would be voted on at the June 24th school board meeting. I was not aware of this, and I reached out to people at the high school. At this point, I have spoken with Principal Erin Schwing. I've received email from Intervention Counselor Jasdeep Molly, and I just spoke with Safety Officer Steve Saunders. All had heard about the resolution and all have major concerns. I'm completely dumbfounded by the suggestion, is the first thing Steve said to me. Apparently, there will be a conversation between several board members and our superintendent with Berkeley High staff tomorrow, and that a resolution has not been drafted and will not be voted on at your next meeting. So, there's a communication disconnect and knowledge gap between our district's decision-makers and what happens on the ground at Berkeley High. This proposal is potentially a serious misstep in addressing the social and emotional needs of Berkeley High students. Berkeley High is a big school. We need every resource that it has and more to support this, there are these needs of our over 3,000 teenagers. And if you have a teen or two in your household, you know that no matter who you are and what you do, anything can happen to your child at Berkeley High, and sadly, a lot does happen. Like the safety officers at Berkeley High, the school resource officer has a direct relationship with students. These relationships provide support resources for Berkeley High students. As I mentioned, I just spoke with Steve Saunders, a safety officer, and he
As I mentioned, I just spoke with Steve Saunders, a safety officer, and he relayed how the current SRO goes beyond his duties. He's been known to tell students, you can call me. I can talk to your parents if you want to. He said, to my knowledge, no one has ever complained. And Steve would know. Yes, there's always room for improvement, but what we have at Berkeley High is community policing. At this time, when police brutality is under the microscope and there are calls for societal reform, potentially, the SRO position at Berkeley High could be promoted as a model of how police can successfully interact with teenagers. So I ask those of you who are meeting with VHS staff tomorrow, please think of this position in the context of how critical it is to supporting the social, emotional, health, and safety of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mimi. And next on the list is Eve Cowan. Ms. Cowan, why don't you go? Go ahead. You have three minutes. Oh, you're not muted. Eve, it looks like you're muted, maybe on your computer. Looks like you are muted, actually. Can you press the unmute, the little microphone that's at the bottom corner on the left, if you can just click on that? There you go.
Hi, this is Eve. Sorry, I just, I didn't know I would get a chance to speak. I thought I would be, I have not that prepared, but I have twin five-year-olds going into kindergarten. I am tremendously upset about the amount of taxpayer, property tax I pay, the fact that I moved to Berkeley for the schools, and the fact that my kids are going to greatly suffer from the fact that both me and my husband have full-time jobs and will have to be full-time childcare. And I need you guys to open up the schools as quickly as possible. Absolutely freaking out. I work at the UC Berkeley School of Public Health. We're working with across campus as well as with the Berkeley and Alameda Health Departments. And on what's called the Safe Campus Campus Study, to open up campus as quickly as possible safely, I urge you to collaborate with the School of Public Health, the Alameda Community Health Department, and the Berkeley Health Department to get the schools open as soon as possible. I think there's a serious issue with isolation. I could go on. I'm really concerned of what's gonna happen between the haves and the have-nots. I've scrambled to try and get them in private school. The private schools are all closed. I mean, all full. And you're gonna see inequity like you've never seen it before. And Berkeley, of all places, I, it's devastating. So I know that nobody wants to have the schools closed, but we gotta, we gotta open them up as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cowan. You even went under your time. So I believe that's our last public comment. So I am now going to turn to committees, and I don't think, I don't see anyone who's representing a committee. Can you raise your hand if you are, so I know for sure? Okay, seeing none, then I'm gonna go over to the unions. And I see Matt Meyer, who's the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers, is gonna be speaking. And I believe that the president of the classified union is also here. Yes. So Matt, why don't you start? And then I will, if you want to speak, Ms. Robinson, why don't you go ahead and put your hands up so I know? But there it is. Okay, go for it, Matt. Go unmute Matt.
Sorry, I didn't know I can unmute myself. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Stevens. I'm Matt Meyer, president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I'm speaking to you tonight at a time of great uncertainty and tremendous challenges. We don't know how or even if we will be able to open our school campuses this fall. We don't know when or even if there will be adequate testing and contact tracing in our schools and community. We don't know whether we will be able to provide safe environments for students and staff, and we don't know the cost of providing them. We don't even know what our state budget will look like, and therefore, we can't say what our district budget will look like, except that we know that cuts are proposed at a time when more resources are desperately needed. Here are some things we do know. Berkeley teachers and support staff care deeply about their students and their community, and have been working hard to figure out how we can make the best of this challenging situation. During the last week of school, they gathered virtually to make plans for starting school in the fall, digging into topics such as how to increase student engagement, how to communicate with families, how to address students' social and emotional needs, how to support different type of learners, how to sequence courses to reflect online structures, and how to re-envision distance learning to serve equity goals. We also know that Berkeley students and their families value their schools and want to experience all the great learning, emotional support, enrichment, and social opportunities that our schools provide. They miss their teachers, their classmates, their libraries, their auditoriums, their gyms, and their playground. We know that our schools are essential to the economy of our state and that they cannot safely reopen with the level of cuts that have been proposed at the state level. We know that reopening school sites will be incredibly complicated, and that even opening in a low-capacity way will be very costly. Every decision is part of a complex web of safety concerns, physical limitations, funding questions, and cost-benefit analysis. We know that the African-American and Latinx families have expressed significantly more concern about returning to physical classrooms in the fall. Their communities have borne the brunt of the pandemic, and they are well aware that it is not over. Results from the district survey show that educators share those families' concerns about returning. In our own BFT survey, we found a strong desire to focus on student connection and engagement in online learning. Many of our families and staff want to return if certain health guidelines are met. If those guidelines are loosened, even as cases continue to rise, the willingness to return will decrease. Like others in the community, we aren't happy with the limitations of distance learning, but we do know more than anyone outside the classroom how difficult it will be to create a safe, nurturing, and vibrant classroom under the strictures of social distancing. We know how hard it is to keep students of all ages six feet apart. We know how difficult it is to adequately clean the surfaces they touch and the materials they use. We know that the idea of a true bubble is not feasible, even in elementary, given all the support services that our students receive. Adults will have to move between many classes, breaking the bubble for everyone in the group they see. The same goes for our valued specialists such as music, art, P E, science, gardening, and drama. We also know that precautions may prohibit adults besides staff from coming on campuses, so we are looking at no parent or community volunteers in the classroom. In secondary, teachers see 150 students a day, and students cycle through six teachers, each class having a completely different set of students. The bubble concept couldn't even apply in this setting. We are wondering what the health and safety recommendations are for secondary structures. We know that the inability to fully utilize buses, cafeterias, playground equipment, libraries, and more will make our return less satisfying. We know that some students will challenge the new rules, and we know how hard it will be to enforce them with compassion. We know that some students will get sick, and there will be no safe place in many sites to keep them while they wait to be picked up. Recent news reports shows that COVID cases and hospitalizations are actually rising in our state and county. The focus of our preparations for fall must align with that reality. BFT is making great efforts to be an active and available partner in the crucial decisions that must be made over the summer. As a democratic organization with around 900 members, our leadership can't simply decree an outcome, but we have scheduled unprecedented summer meetings of our executive board and have put in place an electronic voting system so we can quickly get the authorization we need to negotiate agreements over the summer. As we're sure you agree, these negotiations will need to hold the health and safety of students and staff as the highest priority. Any physical reopening must be done based on science and guidance from public health officials, not in response to quarantine fatigue or the understandable desire to return to normal, and certainly not based on any cost-saving shortcuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. That was perfectly timed. I learned while you were talking that there's a, there is a community member who had her hand up, oops, sorry, that was five minutes, who had her hand up to speak. But it's not showing on our computers. So what I'm gonna do, Ms. Babett, is I'm gonna go ahead and have Lynette Robinson speak as the president of the BCC. And then you can speak.
Can you hear me?
Go for it, Lynette. Yeah.
We've been Lynette Robinson, president of the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees.
You know what, Lynette, I mean, Ms. Robinson, there's some kind of funny noise, maybe like yes.
I attended the I think it's still me. What is that? I attended the affinity meeting yesterday. Why am I getting feedback?
Lynette, there's some feedback. Do you have a headphone or some sort of device?
That's what I'm trying to see.
You know what else, Lynette? Maybe what we can do is you can call in so that while you're, you know, you can put your head face up, but you can call in, so then you can, you know, talk by phone to the group. How's that sound? Oh, we don't hear the feedback now. Lynette, are you still there? All right. Well, you know what? I am going to, when Lynette comes, when Ms. Robinson comes back, I will let her, I'll give her the, I'll give her the, the mic after Ms. Laura Babett has a chance to speak.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank everyone for the town hall last night and for your frank and honest dialogue with us. And to also announce that I'm going to be having a Black Lives Matter car caravan for change. The Black Lives Matter, L is for liberation, I is for investment, B is for vocation, E is for education, S is for sons and daughters. This is gonna play, take place on Saturday, June 27, 2020. We will be meeting at the North Berkeley BART station at 2:00 PM, ready to drive off by 2:20. Along that route, we're going to be sure to drive by Longfellow Middle School so that the entire community can see the facility upgrades needed at that school. And then we'll rally at the Berkeley Marina from 3:00 to 4:30, bringing together the fact that Black Lives Matter, Black education matters, and many of the things that we talked about in our town hall last night, how we're going to further change in BUSD. So thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to all of your participation. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Babett. Let's see. Ms. Robinson, are you still here? I just want to make sure that our classified staff has a chance to say their piece through Lynette. You're on. There you go.
Hi, I'm Lynette Robinson, president of the County Berkeley Council of Classified Employees. I attended the affinity group yesterday. Well, yesterday evening. And a lot of the concerns that arose, a lot of the issues that have been faced by the classified were regurgitated. These are the things that we've been saying to this board minus the newer people for years. We used to have safety officers who actually would take students that were at risk on fishing and camping trips. We're down to safety officers, and it's been that way for over two years. And the district doesn't see a need for them, but you don't understand the burnout of the officers that we have. The students have been depending on them. The students need them. In our budget cuts, we need to think a little more clearly. I'm actually thankful that you finally added the administrative staff and managers to the furlough layoffs. Because if we're gonna be equitable, they need to be a part of this as well. You should not be cutting what directly impacts our students. And that's what usually happens. 2008, we took a hit. We have not recovered. What's worse is the students don't get an opportunity to recover. We live, we let them go half-loaded. They're not getting all that they can. The enrichment isn't there because we don't think before we cut. Looking over the budget, there's a lot of things that still can be tweaked. We pay a lot in overtime, reason being, we don't have enough staff. You have to start thinking logically. It's not always about the dollar in the way that you see it making sense. You really have to look at the impact on our students. And that's all we've ever said. Last night, I heard staff speak up. And what's sad is what they said last night, they should have been able to say anytime. But they don't feel safe speaking up. But being in a room with people who look like them made it a safe space. It forced you to listen. Some of these people were classified employees. Classified employees, children go to the schools. And they don't feel safe speaking up for their children. I heard last night that the union has power. That was kind of funny, but not in a good way. Because the classifieds are primarily the minorities in the district. The first ones you cut, the ones you look down upon, and the ones you think you don't need. And that's the same treatment that the students receive that look like us. We need a true overhaul. And the fact that, that you guys didn't have your stoic looks last night, you were actually nervous in the room, I loved it. Because that's the first time I've ever seen you guys as human. You weren't in control. You had to listen to the voices that were in the room. And that's something you need to practice. Because the classifieds are in the rooms telling you the same things, and you don't listen. The community's saying it, but it's been said for years. Let's go back, 2017. We were here then. Let's go back. What was it? 2009, 2011? We were here again. Let's not come back here. Let's finally make some right decisions so that we can actually progress. Berkeley used to stand for something. Now it means absolutely nothing. When people are trying to get their children out of our district versus bringing them in, we're doing something wrong. And we're definitely not listening. So in going through the budget, let's revamp it. We want the buildings to look good, but we want our children educated equitably. We want all children to have an opportunity. See, we can't say all lives matter until we don't have sessions like we had to have last night.
Ms. Robinson, could you just say the last couple of sentences and then?
In my last couple of seconds?
Yeah. Oh, sentences.
Let's, let's start giving respect across the board. Let's start appreciating across the board. Let's stop classifying and start engaging, appreciating, and encouraging across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I'm noticing that two other, I think, members of the public, Mark Griffin and Tyra H., have both put their hands up after we finished public comment. Because this is, you know, such a different structure, I'm gonna go ahead and let you guys speak, but, or I guess less let, I think Tyra just lowered her hand. Let Mark, oh. Just let Mark, and then if Tyra wants to speak, speak, and then we're gonna stop. Just let Mark and then if Tyra wants to speak, speak, and then we're going to stop public session and I'm going to let you speak for two minutes instead of, well, I guess if it's just one of you, I can let you speak for three minutes. It's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. All right. How you guys doing? I hope everybody is good. I'm calling, uh, I'm actually speaking tonight as a black male who grew up in Berkeley, also have had three children graduate from Berkeley Unified School District. And the one thing that I do see and I see is, uh, we know we have a good education system, but we're not being, uh, we're not giving equality. We're not giving it to everyone. We said we diversified that we would be able to help other, uh, help all the set of, set of children that are not being helped. And that, that's me as a black male. I don't see a lot of black males being helped in this district at all. I've been working here for 25 years and I've been silent. I think I've been silent long enough. My thing is I understand that when we, I've been alongside some of you at different meetings. I've heard a lot of different things that when it came down to, to setting the tone about trying to help the children that are here in the city of Berkeley. I grew up in the city of Berkeley. I was raised in this community. I'm still in this community. But I see a lot of things where we're not trying to do is we're not trying to help the African, uh, African American male. We want to say Black Lives Matter, but Berkeley Unified does not show me any things that Black Lives Matter when we sit here and we see kids failing and being incarcerated. I'm always, I'm looking even in the system of, of parks and recreation. When we sit in there trying to say that we don't have the, uh, any apartment of prison pipeline, well, it's, it's inevitable what I see. I see the same thing where kids are going to jail and society thinks, um, society that we are in constitutes the community is embracing those of, you know, of others instead of what we have here. I really want to know how and what can we do to try to help black males become more successful in Berkeley Unified School District. I would love to know that. Cause my, my twin boys graduated last year and yeah, I pushed them very, very hard, but I lost two parents last year, six months apart. And then I did have the people that I had founded in the school district who backed me with some of the teachers. They know, they helped me through a, a hard time. But I do know that if it wasn't for me being on, on that campus, my children would have been in a bad situation too. So I would really like to get some kind of understanding on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Griffith. Um, oh, Griffin, I'm sorry. And so that closes our public comment. And our union comments. Um, and thank everybody who spoke tonight. I am, it's always great to listen and hear you. Um, okay, so now we're going to move to superintendent, I mean, to board member comments. And I'm just going to actually go down how I have you on my computer. So why don't we start with Vice President Alper?
I'm, I'm good, President Appel.
Okay, Director Brown?
Um, do you mind coming back to me, President Appel?
Not at all. Um, so let's see. Director Leva Cutler?
Usually first anyway. First of all, I want to appreciate everybody who came out last night's town hall meeting. I was listening and was hearing and I was in pain in terms of some of the stories of experiences that some of our parents and our teachers and our students are having. It's, it's not good. And it, and it, and it really made me think about several things and even last night I emailed the superintendent in terms of what, what are things that we can do that are dramatic and, and big. And we've been playing small. We've been, you know, doing a packed job and I think that what we need to do as a district is really focus on doing something very big. And I think, you know, the suggestion that was given in terms of an infrastructure is certainly something that I personally would like to see how we can do that and do that in a bigger way to address the issues that we've been continually having for around our African American, black students and the students of color. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can bring that, keep bringing that up in the different ways and whether it's to do the budget, it's our facilities, or just get learning plan, um, that we keep that lens on in terms of the experiences and stories our students are having. Also just want to make a comment in terms of our, um, safety resource officer. We are in conversation. We're listening. We're, we're, there's no decision that's made on this, but obviously in, we all hold the safety, emotional safety of our students and, um, you know, and it goes back to having an armed police officer in our schools. It's not the person. It's about having an armed person, personnel on district campus and what that means, given everything that has been going on for years and years. And so it's really looking at that and looking at what other sources and resources and other opportunities that we might have to, to, to help our students, especially now when we've been going through this pandemic, we've been going through this whole movement of, you know, addressing racism. There's much more to it. It's very layered. And so I look forward to the conversation that we're going to have and perhaps next week or practice in the fall, but we will have this conversation and I appreciate everybody's input in this.
Thank you very much, Director Leva Cutler. So now I'm going to turn to Director Sinai.
Thank you, President Appel. Um, first and foremost, I want to congratulate all of the Berkeley graduates who graduated last Friday. Um, and we, I, I missed the Berkeley Adult School graduation that I usually do, which is a very moving, powerful event of folks who have gone back and got their high school degrees. And so I, I wish them all the best and I just really want to applaud the Berkeley High staff and the students who put together the virtual graduation, which was so inspiring. I, I, I didn't miss sitting in the hot sun for four hours at the Greek, but I did miss seeing everybody in person and being able to hand people their diplomas, but it was a very inspiring and alternative way to do the graduation. So I want to thank everybody for that. I want to thank teacher Marguerite Tally Hughes who spoke earlier this evening and all of the veteran Jefferson community of staff and students who worked so diligently in the early 2000s around the name change and had the wrong decision made at the time. And I want to thank them also for championing this throughout the 15 years. And I'm really honored to be on a board that agrees that the Jefferson name needs to be removed and that will embark on the next step with how to rename that. But I really want to thank the people who've been involved in that with that so long. And the only thing I want to add to what Director Leva Cutler said around, I want to be really clear with people that when Director Leva Cutler and I mentioned last week during the discussion around the Black Lives Matter resolution, that we wanted to revisit or visit the school resource officer, which is the armed police officer that is provided to the school by Berkeley Police Department and the city of Berkeley. We were not talking about, and I just want to make sure people know, the school safety officers. We're talking about the armed police officer. And we want to have dialogue and discussion about when we talk in the community about defunding the police and refund, rethinking how the police are working in our community. We, I want to make sure that if we're going to keep a police officer on our campus, that we have rethought the purpose of that position, that we evaluate the resources that are going into that position and whether or not we could better serve our students in other ways, particularly our students of color and our black and brown students who are most disproportionately impacted by both police activity and investigations and arrests as well as our own discipline. We want to engage in the dialogue. So I, we may come next week with a resolution. Director Leva Cutler and I are exploring it now. The resolution will probably not be eliminate the SRO. But it will be looking at what the alternatives are and what a community engagement might be. So I ask that you look forward to that and we're in a very exploratory moment right now. And like Director Leva Cutler said, no, no decision or specific recommendation has been made yet. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Why don't I go ahead and make my comments and then I'll find out if Director Brown is ready. If not, the superintendent can speak and then she'll go. Actually wasn't going to make comments tonight. I got really emotional when I made them last week and I was just going to leave it, but there are a couple of things that I do want to say. I also really want to congratulate our, our very our graduating class of Berkeley High Schools, Berkeley High School. They did graduate on Friday and, and it was amazing. The speakers were amazing. Um, the, like the, the list of the students with their, with their little quotes and their pictures was amazing. So I, I understand that for most of you, it's not the same as walking across the stage and I guess getting your, your diploma from one of us, but I, I hope that you were able to celebrate your accomplishment because it's been, you know, it's been 12 years of very hard work. Um. I also just, I, I don't want to talk about this for long, but I also wanted to thank the PCAD members and the, and the African American families who showed up. I think there were nearly 100 who showed up for the affinity group town hall last night and I really appreciated how open and honest you were and I think like, like Director Leva Cutler, you know, I was so sad and, um, you know, I, I don't want to be like all whiny, but you know, I was, it's really, was really impactful. Um, yeah, I'm very, very, you know, I'm very sorry that our students are having that experience in our schools and I want to really think hard and new about how we can address, you know, the conversation is deeper and we should address this in a deeper way. And I am really looking forward to doing that and I, I'm going to talk about this later, but I, I really think we, you know, we need to, we need to pass our budget. You know, keeping in mind at least the parts of the resolution that were included. I mean, at least the parts of serving our African American community that were included in the resolution and I believe more too. So let's keep that in, in mind when we talk about the budget. All right. So that's all I am going to say. Um, Director Brown, do you have comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much. Um, good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening. Thank you to our speakers who gave public comments on Longfellow and the need to allocate more resource funding specifically, but not limited to facilities. I'd like to thank those who spoke in reference to our school name changes as well as those who offered reflection on our district's current distance learning plan. I have the pleasure this week to visit Ms. Tally Hughes's classroom to watch what I would call an unpleasurable 2005 board meeting where the board voted not to accept the recommendation to change the name of Jefferson School. I'd like to thank Marion Abrams, Patricia Smith, Marguerite Tally Hughes, Beverly T., Lori Bondgard, and the late Dora Dean Bradley, as well as the hundreds of faculty, staff, students, and families that spent countless hours to ensure that the work, ensure that they did the work to change the name of Jefferson School beginning back in 2003. It is because of the work that you started 17 years ago that we are here. And I want to thank you for that. The board in 2005 missed the opportunity to change not just our city, but our country. They missed the opportunity to honor the democratic process and they missed the opportunity to honor the work that the children in our city, the children in our city did and shame on them for that. I want to to say that it is not the responsibility, however, of this board to rewrite the wrongs of our predecessors, but it is our responsibility to use the pins that in our, that are now in our hands to write a new history that engages and as well as educates our community. And I want to make sure that we keep that in mind. Shifting gears, I have the pleasure of attending the Black and African American affinity town hall meeting as Ms. Babbitt, Ms. Robinson, President Appel and President Leva Cutler, or Director Leva Cutler mentioned. Um, and it was really powerful to share that space. I'd like to thank all of the leaders from last night's meeting who offered thought provoking questions and also, and also some demands. The conversations around race, racism, lack of resources and school pushouts was so, so rich last night and it can't just be left there. Business as usual can't and won't continue. And we're reminded by Ms. Lewis that the experiences of black children's, but of black children and families in this district is often and should not ever be minimized to just anecdotal stories, but they need to be taken seriously and those who cause harm should be held accountable for their wrongdoings. Kamara brought up a wonderful idea about the need for a Title VI coordinator in our district as well as PCAD leaders who encouraged us to develop an African American or black and African American community advisory council that reports to the board. And so there are a lot of, a lot more rich conversations that happen that I can't capture in just my, a couple of minutes, the couple of minutes that I have from my board comments. But I would encourage everyone to please, anytime you see that there's an affinity town hall meeting, you need to be there. Especially those who have direct services with our students, specifically our teachers and our classified staff, please make sure you are in that space to hear what is happening in our district to our African American students and to use it as an opportunity to be reflective on how, what, what role you are playing in our school pushouts. Finally, this weekend is a celebratory weekend honoring Juneteenth. So Juneteenth, um, the combined words Juneteenth, June and 19th commemorates the true ending of slavery in the United States with the last group of slaves being freed in Texas. If you have not done any research about Juneteenth, please, please, please take the opportunity to learn about Juneteenth and the importance of it. There are so many celebrations that are happening this weekend, starting on Friday and ending on Sunday. So please find someone or do the research yourself to learn about Juneteenth and find a way to, to celebrate them. Thank you. Uh-oh, I can't hear you. You're muted.
Thank you to Director Brown. That was perfect timing. Um, okay, so now with that, I'm going to turn to Superintendent Stevens for his comments.
Thank you very much, President Appel. I'm going to keep mine very, very brief this evening because we're about to jump into a long presentation. I also have just a quick thanks to offer among the many folks who were thanked for last night's event. I also want to call out Anne Caligari and Kamara O'Quinn, who did a lot of work behind the scenes to serve as a bridge between the district and families of color, African American families. So thank you to you both. Anne, I know you're in the audience right now and I really appreciate it. And then I'm just going to take advantage of this moment to offer a quick personal message. So among the attendees of tonight's meeting is my mom. She's watching right now. I haven't seen you, Mom, in a long time because we're all, we're all distancing. So just want to let you know that I miss you and I can't wait to see you soon, I hope. That's all.
Can we all say, aww?
I know.
Should I tell Ms. Stevens that you are never, is that her name?
Yes.
Will you tell her, can I tell her that you're never that short? For your, for your benefit. Anyway, it's great to have you. Miss, Miss, Mrs. Stevens and, and all of the participants who are joining us tonight. It's always really, I don't know, it's always really inspiring that so many of you take your evenings. I mean, I know there's not that much going on, but let's be honest. I'm sure there's like, anyway, other things to do. So I really appreciate your interest and commitment to our district. And that being said, I'm now going to move to 12.1 and that's the public hearing for an approval of tier one reductions for 2021. Not a very cheerful subject, yet one that we need to have. So.
Do we need to do the consent calendar first?
President Appel, do we need to do the consent calendar first?
Or didn't we, did we not do that? Oh, my gosh. I don't know what's wrong with me. I'm so glad I have you, Ty. Anyway, yes, let's do that first. Good idea. So who's gonna? Okay, Director Brown has moved. Anyone going to second?
I'll second.
Okay, Director Leva Cutler, seconding, seconding that motion, seconded that motion. Ms. Chavez, do you want to take a roll call?
Sure. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes, and, you know, I'm really sorry, you guys. I normally do keep track of everything that comes next in meetings. I've been going to them for many years, but for some reason, I keep, maybe, I don't know, I keep forgetting things. So thank you for your patience. So now we are going to move to the action item. 12.1, Public Hearing for an Approval of Tier One Reductions for 2021. Take it away, Brent. I mean, Superintendent Stevens.
Great, thank you so much. I'm just pulling up my screen. So this is, promises to be a relatively detailed conversation. A whole range of budget proposals related to the coming school year. I'm going to be assisted a great deal by Pauline Follinsby, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. In fact-
Stevens, can I just interrupt you for one second? I'm sorry, it's a facilitation thing. I just wanted to remind you that if you can take notes, then we're, we're going to take questions at the end. And I promise you that actually, we're going to let, we're going to take the time to answer all the, to address all the questions. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, thanks very much. I appreciate that. So Ms. Follinsby, I'll, I'll do just the first couple of slides and then I'll, I'll pitch over in your direction. So just as a reminder to folks who have been viewing the sort of progression of our budget development over the course of the month of June, we're now in the roughly fourth week of budget development since the May revise was issued on May 14th. We very quickly reassembled our budget committees. We've been doing lots of research as a staff team and have been sequentially sharing ideas, taking feedback, revising ideas up to the point of this evening's meeting. So we're greatly appreciative of all the folks who have been sitting in committees, listening to these presentations, offering feedback and alternative ideas to get us to this point tonight. Here's the, the game plan for this presentation. Pauline Follinsby is going to go over budget highlights, including, as a reminder, the impact to our unrestricted general fund of the governor's May 14th revision. And she will be sharing additional details in the form of a variance report and multi-year projections. These are new information, both for board members and members of the public. We'll talk tonight about COVID-19 investments, including the creation of a COVID equity fund. And then we'll move on to talk about the sort of line items in our suggestions of budget reductions. We'll finish up with a discussion of the LCAP budget and also ask for the board's approval this evening of the reductions or suggested reductions to our LCAP budget. And then what I'd like to, before I go on, I'd like to note and will note again before I finish that we are actually planning to come back to the board in a week. We've been all moving so quickly. And so we have additional thinking to do, both about COVID-19 and about equity. And so I will propose to bring a limited set of additional ideas, particularly related to equity and related to the implementation of last week's Black Lives Matter resolution. And so we were just not able to prepare that analysis this evening. So we're going to take advantage of the extra meetings in June to come back with a limited number of additional recommendations for expenditures and potentially some reductions. So Ms. Follinsby, at this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to you.
Okay, thank you very much, Superintendent Stevens. Good evening, everyone. I'm presenting, actually, it's a public hearing on the preliminary budget. And we have to talk about the budget reductions because it's an integral part in ensuring that we actually had a balanced budget. So as you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about this 2021 budget. The, the governor proposed $14 billion in budget reductions. And then he, his opinion is that it will be eliminated if the federal government funding is received. Whereas we know the legislature is anticipating that the federal revenue will be received. And we should only make reductions if the federal funds are not received. So this is diametrically opposed to each other. But the district is required to build their budget based on the governor's May revision, which is what we did. So we're basing our opinion with the assumption that the budget reductions will have to take place. So on the next slide, we have Superintendent Stevens. Superintendent Stevens? Okay, so I'm waiting for the next slide.
He's really letting his mom down.
So we'll wait for the next slide. Brent has the, we're viewing his screen at the moment.
Assistant Superintendent Follins, maybe you could talk through it.
I need to see the slides.
Oh, you need to see the slides.
I'm looking at his slides as well. And you also need to see the slides. Usually I do the budget highlights.
We're just talking about where we're at now in June 15th.
Yes, so basically, I'm bringing the preliminary budget the way that I always do at this time of year, where we have a preliminary budget that the board looks at and, and discusses in terms of any suggested changes needed. And if not, we go ahead and adopt the budget as presented at the preliminary budget. So on this slide, we see the, the budget highlights. And as we know, we're building the budget with a negative COLA, negative 7.95 COLA for LCFF funding, and which also impacted some of our categoricals. We also did get sped funding at the 605, $645 per ADA. And they did not have a COLA, but more importantly, they did not have the negative COLA either, the reduction. So it, our special ed funding wasn't impacted as much as our general fund. We know that the state gave us a relief in our STIRS and PERS REIT for 2021 and 2122. And they're deferring state revenues in 2020, in 1920, actually, for one month and in 2021 for three months. And it's important to note that this budget actually does have in the impact of our bearer parcel tax. It's included in funds, the funds 1 through 8 summary, it's recorded in Fund IV. And it has its own resource, so it's separate from BSEP, but it's in its, in, in Fund IV. So on the next slide, we do have a positive certification. And this is after implementing $9.9 million in budget reductions. The board previously approved the $1.3 million. And tonight, we're bringing $8.6 million in budget reductions that Dr. Stevens is overtaking you through. We, after making these cuts, we do have an undesignated fund balance of $765,000 after, which is a positive balance. And then we are also positive for the out years, which is why we have a positive certification. Next slide. And this is just a reminder of the impact of the May revise. You can see we lost from our projected amount for 2021. We thought we were going to get a 2.31% COLA. We actually got a negative 7.92% COLA. And that resulted in $8.6 million in loss of base funding and also $504,000 in loss, loss in supplemental funding. With the, the relief on STIRS and PERS, gave us a $1.4 million relief. So the net impact is a reduction of $7.7 million. And this is only on our BSEP, on our, on our LCFF funding. Next slide. So this takes us to the variance report. And when Dr. Stevens clicks on the link, it takes us to the variance report. And this is what we usually hand out to everyone on the team. So this looks very familiar. It's also in our budget book, which is online. So we can see that the, the reduction in our LCFF funding, that's the $7.4 million that I talked about earlier. And then we also had a loss, somewhat of a loss in state funding. But the major driver of our loss in funding is our LCFF funding, the loss of LCFF funding. This, the change in our expenditures is explained further on the subsequent charts. But this is predominantly the impact of our budget reductions, net of our, our step on column increases. So we had movements on both sides. So this is the net impact to our operations, including our indirect costs. And then going scrolling further down, you could see that nothing major in terms of our contribution to our self-insurance fund, that's gone down a little. And then on the following slide, on the following page, you can see that we have some significant changes here. So our cafeteria fund, we worked with our nutrition services department and worked closely with Bonnie to look at what we think the cafeteria program would look like with distance learning and with the hybrid model. So we, we think with, using the grab and go method, we think we can reduce our contribution to that program by the $383,000 that's there. And that's without us, like I said, doing the grab and go method for our students. And that would be at, at the sites that we currently serve. And the next major change is our transfer from Fund 20. We had originally budgeted $3.2 million this year. And that was to facilitate the salary increase that we gave, the 2.5%. We also knew at that time that we, we were going to draw down another 3.2 in 2021 to, to facilitate the salary increases. However, you can see this amount is now $6.1 million. This basically is backfilling the, the money that's needed to create a balanced budget. So that's an additional $2.9 million from Fund 20. And I will walk you through the impact to Fund 20 later on in the presentation. BSEP's present contribution, that was the expected amount. It was a little bit less, actually, because of the impact to STIRS. So we thought we were going to get another $200,000 or more. But in terms of the change in class size and other, and projected enrollment, this is the amount that we're getting from BSEP. And of course, our special ed contribution, it remained essentially flat. Actually, no, it's $690,000. So we thought, in terms of our SBG contract, we thought we could take, we could reduce services in the following year. And Dr. Stevens can address that in more detail. But this is the savings that we have for special ed. So with all of the changes that I mentioned before, our change in ending fund, in, in the change in fund balance resulted in $333,000. And for 2021, we're projecting a positive ending fund balance of $765,000, which is significantly less than we had projected. But of course, we were balancing for the, the significant budget reductions as a result of the May revise. We can go, we can, we can go back to the regular presentation now. So that was a summary of our variance report. And on the next slide, we are now going to be looking at our multi-year projections. So we actually, we were balanced in 2021. And now our challenge, of course, was to try and balance in, in the out years so that we would have a positive certification. But remember, in our multi-year, we now have to remove the one-time funding or one-time contributions or transfers in, as well as removing one-time expenditures. So with that, we're facing the net shift in one-time funding and expenses. But, and we have zero COLA in the out years. So we're basically getting the same level of funding and, and removing the one times. And of course, if we get additional funding from the state or federal government, this will mitigate the need for budget reductions in the out years. So this next slide is going to, this is our best thinking at this point in terms of our projections for the multi-year project, for the multi-year projections. So you can see with the COLA, it's a negative 7.92%, but then it's zero for the out years. So they're basically taking a cut in 2021 and keeping the level flat. So you can see our LCFF funding is basically flat for the out years, is not significant changes. Our, 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 the state funding and local revenue was also essentially flat. So our revenue remains essentially unchanged. On the next slide, we look at our expenses and contributions. So our expenses jumped significantly from $88.8 to $94 million. And, and with step on column, that amount increased slightly to $95.6 in the third year. This second slide, second down, this, this line is significant, as you can imagine. It's showing that we would need to make budget reductions of $11 million. It's now compounded from the year before and an additional $2 million in 2022, 23. So either ongoing cuts of $11 million and, and additional cuts of $2 million. And we don't, we think the, the state government, we're going to get some kind of federal relief. But this is what the budget looks like based on the governor's May revise. And this is what we would be facing, which is, is, is a pretty challenging and pretty devastating for the district. Our sources and uses, we, the $6.1 million is actually negating some of our, our transfers out to special education netted by BSEP. So that $6.1 million goes away. So we're actually, our use will be $7.4 million for '21, '22, and '22, '23. So with our change in fund balance, we are significantly deficit spending in 2021. And we are deficit spending by $200,000 with the $11 million cuts in '21, '22. And we are, we actually have somewhat of a surplus in '22, '23. And you can see our projected ending fund balance were barely positive. But it does allow us to have a positive certification for the out years. So the next slide. This is just a, this is just a detail of the sources and uses, which I won't go into too much detail. But you can, you can refer to that if you want to look at the details in terms of the changes in the sources and uses. So on the next slide, Dr. Stevens will talk about our anticipated new expenses.
Thank you very much, Ms. Follinsby. I appreciate it. So over the course of several presentations, we have been trying to keep track of what we anticipate to be new expenses associated with elements of the school closures and potential school reopening. We've tried to score these expenses in two different categories. First category is expenses related to distance learning. That means that these are additional expenses we anticipate in order to support students with ongoing distance learning. No matter what happens with school reopening, we imagine distance learning will be some component of our educational program next year. And that's very consistent with decisions other districts are making as well. So none of these items will be unfamiliar to members of the board and public who have been following along. They include things like mental health services, additional investments in technology, and tutoring support. What's different about this slide- and tutoring support. What's different about this slide is that we've attempted to attribute a funding source to each of these potential expenses. So you'll see a column related to the general fund. These expenses total $245,000. We imagine that we will be able to use some portion of our restricted federal funding, and this is funding specific to COVID for a portion of these expenses. And then we're imagining some portion of them attributable to BSEP. And then there's a second slide, and these are all expenses as we're currently scoring them associated with reopening our schools. And this, as we've described many times, is a running tally. As we get deeper into our planning, we are realizing additional details that may have additional cost implications. And we continue to add these expenses to this ongoing list. So currently, we're working right now with an assumption that if we were to open an elementary school day camp to provide some additional supervised experience for some students, that that's roughly a cost of half a million dollars to the district, scorable at this point to the general fund. We're counting a portion of the cleaning and protective wear to restricted funding. And then we're also planning on additional expenses related to cleaning, particularly coming from our facilities bond. So this does not represent all of the potential cleaning expenses. And then right now, we are imagining adding nursing services in the form of one full-time nurse to supplement our our current nursing services. In this, we would anticipate to be an expensive and additional $136,000. Down at the bottom of the slide, then you can see how we are at this point scoring all of these various COVID-related expenses, $881,000 to go to the general fund, $412,000 to go to CARES funding, and $200,000 to go to BSEP. And that's a total amount at this point of $1.49 million, almost a million and a half dollars. So we're going to continue on. It's at this portion of the presentation that we'll begin to go in quite a bit of detail through a set of recommendations related to the 2021 school year. The last time we were together, we introduced a methodology for contemplating these reductions and shared with the board and members of the public that we were thinking of these reduction ideas in terms of tiers. And I'd like just to remind folks of the definition of these tiers, and then I'll go through some of the various items. So as a reminder, we're defining tier one as reductions that we would propose to be approved by the Board of Education and implemented immediately. These things include ideas like a selective hiring freeze, reducing staff overtime, administrative furloughs only for selected district office administrators, nutrition services reductions, reductions to contracting, substitute expenses, small reduction to the cooking and gardening program, contribution of some one-time funds, and a very limited reduction of positions. All of those total to just over $5 million. Then as a reminder, we're also thinking of tier two as reductions to take place in the 2021 school year, but that they would be implemented mid-year. The idea here is that we would like to wait some additional time to learn more both about revenue collected by the state and eventually passed on to schools and the availability of federal relief to public school districts. And included in this category are limited department reductions, some stat additional staff reductions, staff furlough days, cooking and gardening, and the additional contribution of one-time funding to make up the difference. So the total here is eight and a half million dollars that you see that down at the bottom. And what you should think of that sum representing is both the reduction to our general fund plus our COVID-related expenses. So we've covered both of those before, the seven, roughly $7.6 million in reduced allocation to BUSD, and then the roughly $1.4 million, almost $1.5 million in increased costs associated with COVID-19. Just as a reminder, then tier three, we are imagining as additional reduction ideas, should they be needed, and only to be contemplated for the '21, '22 school year. And we're including concepts like additional inspection of our transportation program, staff layoffs, both among certificated and classified, additional furlough days. And it's at that point that we would contemplate an early retirement incentive. That particular idea is next year because our current analysis suggests that there's no real savings to the district. I want to make one important note about all of this, and that is the staff furlough idea. Furloughs are a bargainable strategy. And so as we contemplate asking the board for approval of furloughs, we ask that board members keep in mind that this is something that we would then have to go and bargain with our bargaining units. And so is there's a small dependency there? Well, it's a significant dependency. So again, just as a reminder, tiers one and two, these are reductions in expenditure and then and increased contributions, meaning increased increased state revenue or increased federal revenue would all right, sorry. So that all of these reductions are included in the preliminary budget. I apologize. So both tier one and tier two would be included in the 2021 budget. And then as a reminder, as revenue is restored, our current thinking is that budget reductions in tier two only would be eliminated or reversed. And we're recommending at this point, though, that tier one budget reductions be thought of as lasting through the entire year and potentially permanent so that we begin to build some fund savings, given Ms. Follinsby's estimation that we may be facing additional significant budget reductions in the next year. And then finally, tier three, as a reminder, we take, we pick up conversations about these reductions in the '21, '22 school year. So let's begin just to walk through all of these reductions. And as a reminder, here are the totals that we'll be talking about. Tier one, $5.2 million. Tier two, $3.4 million. And tier three, of course, to be determined, that's '21, '22. So we're now going to jump into this list of budget reductions. And again, President Appel, I think it's the case you would prefer that board members are taking notes as I go through these, and then we'll work our way back into questions. Is that correct?
Well, yes, that is correct, although I'm wondering if there are any, I don't see any questions for the first part. So referring to the first part. So yes, why don't you move, why don't you go ahead and we'll take questions at the end.
Thank you very much. So we arrive at our first list of tier one reductions. These are exactly similar to the reductions that we described in our last meeting only a week ago. The formatting is somewhat different. The board member should recognize all of these cuts. So I'm going to provide a brief description of these, and then we welcome circling back on any of these items, should there be questions. So there are two proposed reductions in contracted services. One from a consultant who's been providing training to staff on how to recollect mandated costs or reimbursements for mandated costs. And the second is to a contract to with a company called SPG or School Psychology Group. And this is a special education related contract. And after significant amount of the study of this contract, we believe that we can reduce that by the amount shown. So in total, we're proposing reductions to contracted services of $530,000. We're proposing a relatively modest reduction to the general fund contribution to our gardening and cooking program. That reduction is $50,000 in tier one. And as a bit of context, gardening receives $300,000 from the general fund and $900,000 from the city's sugary beverage tax. We're also then proposing to realize savings through the selective freezing of a variety of open positions. So these are positions that do not have an employee in them. They include an accounting manager, the BHS math coordinator, four behavior intervention specialist positions, and a beat attendance tech position at the Berkeley Technology Academy or BTEC, freezing 4.4 FTEs worth of campus aides, three FTEs worth of school safety officers. Remember, these are vacant positions. There are no people in these positions. Special education instructional assistants, up to eight FTEs, again vacant. And then two special education TSA positions that are also vacant. I'd like to make the point, all of these are currently attached to a funding source. They are currently budgeted. And so these are actual savings. The only exception to this list is the accounting manager. And because we had previously scored that particular savings, we can't double count it. That's why it's not represented in this list. So the total proposed savings through the selective hiring freeze is just over $1 million. Also included in the category of tier one reductions are the following. We're proposing to switch our nutrition service meal program from the plated meals that we currently offer to a grab and go. We think that under all circumstances, this will be the only way that we're doing meal service in any case. And there are some savings to realize. These come both from reduced procurement costs, but it is also reduced staffing costs. And this right now is contemplated as a reduction of hours for nutrition service staff, but not a reduction in positions. We would also propose a significant contribution from Fund 20. This is one-time funding of $1.5 million. This board members will know is increased compared to last week's presentation. We're also proposing to reduce district office overtime by 50%. And then to realize additional savings in overtime by moving our district security overtime from the general fund over to our facilities fund, what we call Fund Two. We're proposing in tier one, limited number of furlough days, two furlough days for unrepresented managers at the district office level. So this would impact all of our managers, both classified and certificated, from the director level up, up into, up into, and including the superintendent. Then we are moving on to substitutes. We believe, given the likely prevalence of distance learning next year, that we can realize some savings in the category of substitute spending. We spend roughly $3 million per year in substitutes, both for certificated teachers, classified staff, and administrators. So this is a reduction of about one-third of the typical budget.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
$3 million is the typical expense for substitutes in one year. And then to continue, we're proposing to transfer a maintenance position over to our facilities fund. So this is not a loss in manpower, but it is a fun shift. And then we are proposing one reduction in a position in our enrollment office, and that's equivalent to $80,000. So all of these ideas in total sum up to $5,190,000. And again, these are combined with the previous slide to make for all of our tier one reductions. To then move through what we're contemplating is tier two reductions. Again, these would be reductions scored for our budget in 2021, but not enacted until we have additional information. We propose 10% reduction from the budget of our personnel commission. So this is a conversation we'd have to have with our personnel commission partners. We would propose in this tier two, an additional $50,000 of reductions in the gardening program, an additional contribution, actually two additional contributions from Fund 20. They're scored here twice, but they total $1.4 million. So this would in fact be the second contribution from Fund 20. At this point, we arrive in tier two at the idea of staff furloughs. And new to the board is the actual number of days that we would propose. We hadn't last week put a number of days. But now, having done the math, we believe that we're proposing a three-day staff furlough across all of our bargaining units. And this would for district office administrators be added to the two-day furlough. And then as well, we would propose this as part of tier two to eliminate the set of positions called school service assistants. These are folks who are working to support our secretaries in our schools, and they work anywhere between an hour and two hours per day. So all of this in total, tier one plus tier two comes to a sum of just over eight and a half million dollars. And just as a reminder, so that you can understand the math behind the furlough concept, there's a savings to the district to the general fund of $600,000 for each day of furlough. You can see a subdivision of the furlough savings by bargaining unit. There's also a corresponding savings to other revenue sources. So for example, BSEP would save some amount of money through a furlough. LCAP would save some amount of money through a furlough if that happens to be the funding source for a particular employee. Again, I want to note importantly, furloughs are bargainable changes to the work calendar. And so there's an important provision, should the board approve this particular measure, that we will begin engaging our labor partners in all of this. And I'll note that the furlough concept is not taken lightly. We recognize that this is collective sacrifice for everybody in the district. It's enacted though with the idea that by by taking furlough days now, we will reduce the need for layoffs in the '21, '22 school year. So that the board understands the total impact on Fund 20, we'd like to present this revised estimate of the ending fund balance. So at the beginning of the school year, this fund balance was up at $11 million. We have made several strategic transfers out. Over the course of this year, there's been two, $3.2 million transfers out. And then with the additional proposed transfers out, we would bring the ending fund balance down to $1.9 million. Now, again, some of these fund transfers are contemplated in tier two and would not take place should the district receive additional revenue. So President Appel, I'm going to propose maybe that we pause here.
I was gonna propose that too, yeah.
Yeah, and then jump into the LCAP after there's questions about the general fund.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw my note, but we actually can't vote on the LCAP budget tonight because it's not on the agenda, but we can talk, we can certainly talk about it. So what I would like to do is start with any comments to the first part of the presentation, because I actually do have one that I forgot to ask, and the tier one, tier one reductions, and then we'll go back around and address the tier two. So I see Director Sinai.
Hi. Okay, I have kind of an early question from like all the way back to the budget highlight. So I'm sorry, when you go through it all like so long, it's it's a little bit challenging. But I'm a little confused, and I'm thinking I may not be the only one, so I'll go ahead and ask the question. And then I've just got a couple of other ones, but it's the budget. So I'm just trying to get a handle on where it says budget highlight, the one right before. Okay, so right here, we have $9.9 million in cuts with 1.3 we've already approved and 8.6 you're proposing in tier one and tier two, right?
Correct.
When you go to the next slide, it has 7.7 million in debt. Could you just, I'm a little, I'm just getting a little confused on why we went from the 7.7, which is what I think we were kind of, what I was kind of thinking of at the last meeting to this 8.5 with the 9.9 with some we already cut.
Yeah, the the difference Director Sinai is that as we take into account our COVID-related expenses, we're sort of budgeting for them. And so we're adding the 7.6 or $7 million of reduced revenue and the roughly 881 in increased expenses to the general fund to arrive at that 8.5 figure.
Okay, thank you. That helps. And then I have two, three specific questions around here. I think they're all in tier one. And the first one is that I know you said that all of the hiring freeze are vacant positions. I'm curious to know, for how long has the math coordinator position been vacant? Is that like recently vacant?
Yes, very recently. In fact, the current math coordinator just accepted a job out of district.
Okay, so in the sense of, so let me ask the next question. The three school safety officers at Berkeley High, are those recent vacancies as well?
No.
It just surprised me that we had three vacant safety officers. When we're always saying we need them.
Yeah, they're partial vacancies.
I'm sorry, Pauline.
Oh, I'm saying they're actual partial vacancies because it's only scoring at $90,000. It's not full positions.
Yeah, and these, these are essentially the result of a lot of research going through position control reports, tracing back through the budget. And so while these positions have been open, they have actually not been advertised. The school in fact was not aware that they were buried in the budget. So this is really the result of a lot of research conducted both by Pauline Follinsby and then Samantha Tobiasis Bonosa.
What would be helpful there is, is actually Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. If you can put the point X FTE, that would be helpful for me anyway.
Thank you. So I guess I know that the math coordinator with position was created last year around addressing some of the real challenges that our students were having in math. So kind of going back to our, our resolution and our equity lens, I want to know what your thoughts are around the impact on our African American and Latino students around the elimination of the math coordinator and the safety officers. And then just my last question, which might be a quick one, is around the garden cuts. Did Ms. Thompson explore whether or not the cuts in the garden program would trigger any cuts in the city's contribution of SODA tax revenue toward our garden program? And those are, those are my questions, so I'm done after that.
Great, and if I, I hope you'll help me with my memory if I, if I don't answer all of them, Director Sinai. So I might have to work my way backwards. So we have actually reached out to the city as we, these reductions. I've had a conversation with the city manager about all of this thinking. So the city is right now wrestling with its own pretty deep budget dilemmas. But, but at this point, we're getting signals that a reduction on our side would not trigger a reduction on the city side. And then in terms of the school safety officers, again, these are what I would, I'd sort of call them budget ghosts. They were budgeted, we have been carrying them, but the school was not aware that they were openings. There have not been people in these positions for quite some time. I think it's actually something like two years. And so there's no felt impact in freezing these positions. But there is a savings to the budget by, by closing them out. And then in terms of the math coordinator, I'm, I may not be as well prepared to speak about the impact of the math coordinator. I myself have had some conversations with the principal of Berkeley High School as she's been interacting both with the math coordinator and the math department leads about the kinds of support that would be meaningful. And I think, you know, now that Ms. Cardocle is stepping away from her role, my understanding is that the internal conversation is more leaning towards coaching, if it can be available for math teachers as opposed to an administrative position. So the challenge here is, of course, we don't, we're not opening up funding for coaching, but I think that that was already the emerging thinking in the math department about what might be, what might work in the future.
Well, I guess that the response is complicated because we don't, we're unfunding a complete position and not necessarily backfilling with a coaching position. So are we gonna, are we gonna get a request coming back for a smaller amount for coaching? I mean, I think one of the things we've known over the last three years is that there's been, and again, I don't know where the evaluation of effectiveness is, you know, on whether the math coordinator was the effective solution to address the issues of the challenges in the math program at Berkeley High. But I don't think the math challenges have gone away. So I just want to know whether we're thinking a little bit about the implication. And I know all the cuts are really hard, so I'm not, there's no, no judgment there in that sense. But I know that we made a real commitment that we wanted to be careful about cuts, that we're going to impact our students who need that added support. So when we vote today, President Appel, can you help me understand? Is this like a first reading or is this a vote to make these cuts?
This is, that's totally fair. And this is going to be a vote to make these cuts. And I am going to recommend, I will say this now, that, um, well, I will recommend that we add, that we include in our vote that, well, Superintendent Stevens, and I don't agree on this, but I think that if we get a significant amount of federal funds, we should probably reassess this. Although I know Superintendent, we talked about this earlier. Superintendent Stevens is thinking about, you know, the future years. He brought me back, actually back up to that slide that has the three years. And I'm going to recommend that if either we have to make or else we don't have to make the, the tier two for cuts that we reassess that then, but we're not going to vote on that tonight anyway. So the answer to your question is, our vote tonight is final. And so if there's anything you don't want to, you don't want to vote on, I will give you a chance to explain why when you make that, okay? Director Leva Cutler, you're next.
Thank you. I know these are all difficult decisions because if we choose to remove something from this list, then something else has to be cut. And so I don't, I don't have suggestions of other things, but I am concerned about the cuts to special ed. At the SPG, the behavioral specialists, you know, I don't know how this service worked with our students or even if it was working this school year with our students in terms of distance learning. The special ed IA's who possibly assist some of our students up to eight positions. The sped TSA's concerned about our students who are in special ed and who have fallen behind. And how are we going to make that up? And what, what comes in place? And that's, like I said, that's a major concern. The other, and the other, in the other page on tier one reductions, my other concern was during the distance learning, what did we learn about substitute teaching and teach, and teach the teachers who are doing distance learning? Did we see a reduction even there in terms of needing substitutes? Was there a learning curve there in terms of what happens with distance learning and teachers being, you know, obviously sickness happens, things happen? And in terms of the usage of substitutes? And then my last question is on furlough day. That when we're talking furloughs, we're talking all staff, teachers, teachers, instructional assistants? And how does that impact our instructional minutes and hours and days of instruction? If it's just three days, you know, doesn't, doesn't change anything. If it's more, it does. Is there like 98% of your days you can have instruction or meet your quota?
So I, I can jump in and talk about the SPG contract. So the reduction in the consultant's contract is due to the fact that we were also able to hire vacant positions throughout the year. So we've been able to hire two psychologists, which brings us up to 20 psychologists for the, for the upcoming year. We were able to hire an opening of one occupational therapist, which I believe brings us up to seven and one behavior analyst, which gives us a total of four. So we're not losing services, we are now able to provide them in-house.
Okay.
And then just to sort of mention some of the other special education related positions, including the IAs, the TSA's, the behavior intervention specialists. We've done our research on this, these are not traceable back to any students' IEPs. And these are all positions that have been vacant and don't represent a reduction in services to students. And then to talk just a little bit about the substitute costs, where did it go? I've lost track of it. During the last quarter of distance learning, when all of our students were in a distance learning mode, we made a commitment to pay our substitute teachers a prorated amount based on the, the amount that they were working over the past, I think it was something like eight weeks. However, we were not using our substitutes. Teachers were not calling in sick, they were not getting subservices. And so we imagine sort of on the basis of that, that where we do think that we'll be using distance learning next year and probably at the secondary level most predominantly, that we'll have a commensurate savings in substitutes because they'll be less needed in a distance learning environment.
I have another question, should I forgot?
That's fine.
Go ahead. And the other one was about the instructional hours, minutes when furloughing staff.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for that reminder. Yeah, so right now we are waiting on a lot of, a lot of guidance from the state. It may be the case that the state suspends the use of attendance as its funding mechanism, just as it did in this last quarter. Essentially, that means that it's suspension of the required instructional minutes. Under no circumstances do I see, given the year that's coming up, that we will actually instructional minutes as they're described under normal circumstances. So I believe that we'll have options open to us as to when these furlough days would take place. In normal circumstances, we would typically, if we had to use furloughs, we would do that on a professional development day. I think in the coming year, we'll have an option to do it either on a professional development day or on an instructional day. Either as a loss to the district in terms of service to families or an opportunity to work with our staff in professional development, but both represent the savings.
My last question is, you know, and I, we've, we've not spoken about Berkeley Independent Studies or BTEC during this whole process in terms of how they have fared during the distance learning. And so I'm, you know, concerned about less teachers and the assistance, especially our students who are independent studies in BTEC and how we're showing up for supporting that student, those students through the, you know, this, whatever plan we come up with and how this will impact them.
Yeah, and you're referring now to the, the idea that the attendance technician at BTA would be not filled. So I know that Bajie Tiros had a conversation with Heidi Weber, who's the principal over at BTEC. They've done some thinking about how they're able to manage attendance functions for the roughly 35 students or so who are enrolled at the school. And they feel that they've got a good plan to continue all of that attendance outreach using their existing staff. And that's sort of in part because of the relatively small enrollment of BTEC.
You know, just maybe infringing us, but I feel that I personally have not asked questions about our students at BTEC. And so if there is some kind of update in terms of how the students ended the school year, I would appreciate that, especially, you know, those are, are students who have not been successful in Berkeley High School. And so I think a little special attention might help to know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Are you finished, Beatrice?
Thank you.
Director Sinai, you had one more question you were going to ask. Is that the same question that Beatrice just asked?
Yeah.
Okay, Director Brown, you're up.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the superintendent for all of the hard and thoughtful work that was done to, to help us get to this point. And also a huge thank you to Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby. And also saying a huge thank you to the superintendent's budget advisory committee for the work that they did to assist the superintendent. I think we don't get enough opportunities to thank that group for their hard work and advocacy. So thank you so much for that. Director Sinai and Director Leva Cutler, who are of course amazing advocates, asked the majority of my question, which reduces me down to two questions, but probably for the best. So there's a couple of things that I'm super concerned about. One specifically, as it relates to our nutrition, our cuts to our nutrition services programs, the component is to switch our meals to grab and go lunches and it reduces staffing and cost specifically with unfilled positions. Can you help me to understand the rationale behind this, especially with switching to grab and go lunches that I am assuming will be cold lunches for many of our students? I'm, I'm making this assumption that it's a cold lunch and you can correct me if I'm wrong. And I'm making this assumption with the understanding that many of our students going, coming to school is the only opportunity for, for many of our students to have a hot lunch. And so switching to grab and go meals will take that opportunity away from our students. So Superintendent, can you please speak to that? And then my other question was around the furlough days and how they will impact instruction and also how they will impact our students.
Can I ask you, Director Brown, because I have some questions about the furlough days too, that that's tier two? So let's just hold.
Yeah, sure, no problem.
Yeah, in terms of the switch over to grab and go. So this was the same switch that the nutrition services team made when we closed our schools, where we switched over to essentially to meal distribution hubs as opposed to using our cafeterias. What we think right now because of social distancing is that very few of our students will actually be able to eat lunch in the cafeteria. If you imagine a busy elementary or middle school cafeteria with students sort of jammed elbow to elbow, that will not be the scene that you see next year. If we're using our cafeteria, we'll expect that students will be in their bubble group and spaced. And probably they'll be eating in a variety of locations across the, the school campus in order to maintain that distance. What we also don't think will be possible is lunch lines. Students lining up sort of next to each other in order to, you know, pick up their meals. So the idea of moving to grab and go was inspired not so much by the budget savings, but by what we think will be the reality of our cafeteria service next year. And we, you know, none of us want to do this. I'd far rather be serving our freshly made meals. What Bonnie Christiansen and her team have continued to do is insist that all of the grab and go meals are fresh. They're prepared daily in our central kitchen. The team is in there putting together all of the meals using the same standards for the ingredients that they're purchasing. But they are cold, you're correct. They're sort of meant to be taken and eaten in a variety of locations, which I think is just more realistic given the situation we're heading into. And then should I, President Appel, should I, should I take on the question about furloughs as well?
I want to wait for that because I also have some questions about furloughs. And if that's okay with Director Brown, I'd like to have that all discussed at once.
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you have another question on tier one?
Not that, not one that has already been answered.
I know, it's a challenge of always going last, I mean, of going late in this queue. Vice President Alper, I have you up next.
Thanks, President Appel. Yeah, actually, same, whoops, wait, I didn't leave the meeting, did I? No, okay, sorry. I almost left the meeting by accident. Yeah, I had the same experience as Director Brown where my brilliant colleagues have asked the specific questions that I was going to ask. So I just thought I'd make, so just a quick comment and then, then move on. And the, the comment, I thought about when Director Sinai, you were talking about the math position and, and really all of the positions that are going to represent a loss of service to students. And it's just, it's so frustrating and kind of infuriating to be in this position of having to make these, these cuts that really seem to mean to be the failure, a result of the failure of the federal government so far anyway to backfill this, our state government losses, the failure of our state government to adequately fund public education in the first place, failure of the federal government to adequately mitigate the harm caused by the pandemic. All of that, I mean, there's no way to make $8 million worth of cuts without significant program loss. And I want to reiterate Director Brown's praise for our staff in coming up with actually a number of reductions that don't seem to impact students. After we've cut millions of dollars over the last few years, it's, it's, I'm impressed that we've been able to identify some reductions here that, that won't impact students and, but there's not any fat on the budget left. And, and so I guess just to, the comment I wanted to make is that for me, I'm not looking at whether there are reductions on here, whether they will hurt students. Because unfortunately, I think that they will, I think a lot of them will. And they'll, and they will result in a loss of service to the students that we're most trying to support. All students, including students that were, that we're most trying to support. And we've been talking so much about. we're most trying to support. And we've been talking so much about, you know, over the past few years, or particularly the last few weeks in so explicitly. And so I think the question I'm looking, asking is what, whether there are alternatives that allow us to balance the budget. And to me, the only alternative that, that the superintendent has expressed is layoffs, layoffs to teachers, layoffs to classified staff. The people have the most contact with our students. And, and we've always said that we're trying to cut as far away from the classroom and from our students. But that, to me, I think is the, is the question we have is do we do these things or do we lay off staff in the next year? And anyway, that's my comment. That's how I'm looking at it.
Do you have any comments, Superintendent Stevens, or can I go ahead and ask my questions?
No, I agree completely with Director Alper's assessment of this whole situation. It's, it's sad. It's infuriating. And I, and I do hope, you know, that you are all able to see that we've, we've really tried hard to try and minimize layoffs and to try to minimize reductions to schools and classrooms, as difficult as that exercise has been.
I just want to echo the hard work that you've all done. I happen to know you're working really long hours, Superintendent Stevens. And so are, so are you Associate Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby. I know you're all working super hard and excuse me, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness. Yeah, I've been getting a little bit of crap lately because I always, you know, I always thank you guys during these meetings, but I am going to thank you for that too. Anyway, I have a couple of questions. And we did go over most of this earlier. I think my other, my colleagues' questions were really good. But I had there on an earlier slide, there was actually talked about the reduction of special ed. And I'm wondering if that is the same, I don't remember the amount, I didn't write it down. But I'm wondering if that is the same as the, this 224,000. It was like way earlier in the presentation. Do you remember if that's the same or different?
No, I don't. And I think I'd have to, you know, ask you to help me find the slide and then we could track down the question.
Are you talking about the contribution to special ed duty?
Maybe. I don't, I don't remember. I just wrote down special ed. So, oh, yeah, maybe it's.
The variance report?
That sounds right.
Should I, President Appel, do you want me to try to find it in the slide deck?
It's okay. But is the only reduction in expenses to, the only cut to special ed is those, that 224,000? And I think somebody already asked about this, but I, I still don't really totally understand what the impact of that is going to be. And, and also like how it impacts our legal responsibility.
I, I think you would have to, I think I'm not quite sure sort of which of those, the figures you're referring to, President Appel.
Well, even this 224, which is special ed, IAs too, up to 8.0. So let's take that. I don't know. And if there were any other cuts earlier on, I would definitely, like from earlier, like from our earlier cuts, I would want to know that because I'm really interested in knowing what the overall special ed reductions are and how that, and how vulnerable that might make us and how it's going to impact our students.
Yeah, I'll try to take this one on. So first, just to take on the SPG contract. It's a roughly $3 million contract. $500,000 represents some reduction, but not, not, not an entire reduction. And as, as Associate Superintendent Tiaro was describing, the, we've actually been able to bring in-house the services that we were previously relying on SPG to provide. So this is a reduction in the contract, but not a reduction in those services. And then these sort of down below represent open positions that were in the special education budget, but that haven't been filled for quite some time and not, not traced into any individuals, individual IEP. And so doesn't represent a reduction in service to any individual student.
I wish I could remember which slide had this earlier because I don't actually know if it's the same, but we can talk, I mean, we can figure that out later. The other question that I had, most of them were asked, but I do have a question about the, the meals. Because right now it's been very impressive how so many students are getting meals for their whole family. And, you know, if a parent comes and they have a kid with them, you know, they can get meals. Actually, there are families who were feeding all week long. And I, I'm very concerned. I know that hasn't always been the case. And so I'm concerned, those families will still be in need, might still be in need in September. And I'm concerned about cutting that service. So I was wondering, does this include those meals? Is there some other funding source for those meals? Maybe we should go after some other funding source for those meals.
It's a, it's a great question. I, I only know about half of the answer, President Appel. So part of what we were able to take advantage of was a loosening, loosening in the federal regulations related to who we can provide meals to with federal dollars. So typically in the summer, we can use federal meal dollars to be able to provide meals through distribution points. And in fact, we're not even required to limit our meal distribution to, to students who are enrolled in BUSD. It can be any person under 18 is able to get a meal for free during the summer. So those same rules were applied to the school closure period. I myself don't know if they're going to be expended, extended to next year. I may, might ask Pauline Fallinsby if she knows that. And then whether or not Nutrition Services is planning to do the meal distribution in the same way for next year. Do you happen to know?
Yeah, I think there, it's actually extended through December is what I was hearing.
And it still saves, and we still save whatever that is, that $300,000?
Yes, we will.
Correct. And essentially, over this last year, we still weren't serving as many meals as we typically do, even with six meal distribution locations throughout Berkeley. This particular savings really has to do with switching over to the grabbing.
Yeah, might be the change in the menu also, a significant part.
And, yeah, and staff. I, I told, that's really good to hear because I, I have a, I think that it's been really helpful and really great that food has been available for folks. And, and, you know, it's at their school, so it's a comfortable spot for most people, well, some people. And so it's, you know, anyway, so it sounds like we're not going to stop that until at least the end of the year. And that's great news. I think my other questions are all about tier two. And so I'm wondering if there are any other, I'm gonna put my hand down. Beatrice and Kadija, you still have your hands up? Do you still have other questions? Okay, Director Brown. Oh, that's okay. No, I forget all the, yeah, I'm critiquing your use of Zoom because mine's been so spotless. I, okay, so let's do this. Why don't we, why don't we go person by person and I will call on you? And just let me know if there's any of these tier one reductions that you want pulled from the group. Then we'll do a cohesive vote of the ones that are called out. So I'm going to start with you, Beatrice, I mean, Director Leva Cutler.
No, I'm not calling out any reductions sadly. I, I don't have another. You know, it's hard. It's very difficult, but I'm not calling anything out.
Okay. And can we see the other one just to? Okay. And, okay, so Director Brown, you're next in my line here. Is there anything you want to pull out?
You know, just as Director Leva Cutler said earlier, it's hard answering the question, is there anything that we want to pull out? Because that means pulling out something else from somewhere else that'll have, you know, a direct impact in the classroom. And so at this time, I don't want to pull, there isn't anything that, there isn't anything that I would want to pull out. I am, however, really concerned about the Berkeley High School Math Coordinator for all of the reasons that my colleague mentioned and and am interested in how will we get to, anyway. So that's the, the one that I'm really, really concerned, but pulling that out means pulling from other places.
Director Sinai?
I would, I would like to pull, pull it out for now, the math coordinator position for now. Not to replace the math coordinator, but to see whether there might be some allocation to reduce the 110,000 to maybe, you know, 50,000, if there would be some value in, in math coaching for the teachers or something that would provide support. And so what I'd ask is that there be some discussion with Principal Schwang and interim principal Regosa to see, and again, I'm doing this not having had an update on our math data. But my understanding is kids are still struggling and it might be even harder now with distance learning. So I'm nervous about taking the resource completely away, but I don't, I'm not suggesting that we replace that position. So can we pull it out on hold and revisit it, like maybe with the tier two or with a revised look at it?
Yeah, I will just say, since you both have mentioned this, that that was on my list too. So we have three votes. And if we can just pull it out and then maybe we don't have to vote on it because we already know there's the three of us. But the, the motion really does be that we get more information so we can understand better how we're going to address the clear math need at Berkeley High. Does that sound okay?
Yes, it does. And I'd be happy to reach out to the Berkeley High team to begin soliciting some ideas about that.
Okay. And Vice, Vice President Alper, I didn't forget you.
I know you didn't forget me. I, I feel the same way Director Leva Cutler does. I don't like it, but I don't, I don't have anything to pull out.
Okay, great. So, and again, I'm just gonna, I do want to mention this thing that I, I believe that Superintendent Stevens said in the, in the intro, and that is, I don't know what you guys think about this, but, you know, we all passed this resolution last week that included some very concrete action steps. And I don't know what the budget is for any of those things. I don't, I mean, some of them might be higher than others. But I don't want to get stuck in the place where we can't afford to do any of them because we've made these cuts before, you know, before the district has had a chance to, you know, give us an estimate of what those costs. So the only other, I, I would make a motion, my motion would be that we, that we approve all of the pure one reduction recommendations, except for the BHS math coordinator. And that at, that maybe at the next meeting, we'll be able to talk about how we can fulfill the commitment in the resolution that we passed last week and discuss that, you know, look at these again. But that will allow, I think, the staff to move forward with their budget creation building. But, you know, we're just going to have to have like a nuanced, a more nuanced conversation. You know, if, after that, just after that, that work is done by next week. How does that sound to you, Superintendent Stevens and Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. So just to be clear, my motion is that we pass all of the tier one reductions except for the BHS math coordinator and that that be pulled until we can get more information about how we're going to meet the need. And then second of all, that we agree that we're going to, that these are passed. And once we find out the cost of, once we find out the cost of of implementing some of the, the individual items that are in the Black Lives Matter resolution that passed last week, then, you know, we'll have another conversation about it next week and, you know, see if we need to trade out anything so that we can add those new expenses.
I'll second it. I'll second.
Okay, made by me and seconded by Director Sinai. Ms. Tires, could you take the roll call vote?
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes. So there you go. Great work and great presenting that to us. Now let's go, let's have a discussion about the tier two reductions. I think we can't vote on this today anyway, but we can vote on it next week. And I know there was already some discussions about the furlough, the three day staff furlough. And that is something that I think, you know, needs to be negotiated. And I think we're also, you know, we have concerns about the, you know, about the, the ADA, you know, the ADA, the instructional minutes. And we also, you know, we're concerned about our staff. So I think, you know, so why don't we open that furlough conversation up again? I, I know I had a couple of ideas and questions. And I think one person already spoke to it. Was that you, Director Brown?
Yeah, it was me. I was asking about the impact that the furlough days will have on instructional, instructional minutes and what impact it'll have on our students.
Great. So why don't we start with that question? Because I think that's a very great question.
Yeah, these are really good questions. So for particular, particularly for instructional staff, we were going to, we'll be forced to make the really difficult decision between professional development days or instructional days. We'll only have that decision to make if there is latitude granted on the instructional minutes requirement for the year. We suspect that that will take place. It's currently part of the legislature's budget proposal. And I don't, and it's also a subject of a great deal of advocacy. And I just, I cannot imagine under the coming circumstances that we'll be able to. So again, I think we'll have a choice of when to take those furlough days. In any case, though, there will be an impact, you know, a furlough means that folks are at home and they're not working. And so there's no service provided during those furlough days.
So was your thought, oh, I'm sorry. Did that answer your questions, Dr. Director Brown?
And I guess if I were to offer a little bit more, Director Brown, assuming that we have flexibility next year, and I think that we will, I would choose three instructional days for these furloughs, given the profound need that we have for professional development time in the coming year.
Sorry, just sorry, you, you kind of cut out at the end, Superintendent Stevens. Did you say that the, the, they won't be instructional days, but they'll be?
No, I, I, if we have the latitude, I would propose that they are instructional days that are furloughed, given that we have a limited number of professional development and a great deal of learning to do as an organization.
And how will that impact the instructional minutes that we have to provide our students with?
Yeah, again, I'm assuming that that waiver about the instructional minutes will take place for the coming school year, just like it was granted for this last quarter.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that. And the waiver is similar to what was granted in the last quarter? And is the waiver similar to what we applied for in response to the, to the wildfires that happened?
They're somewhat different. In this case, it was actually the state legislature at the beginning of the school closure period decide they enacted a law that waived the average daily attendance calculations for school funding and therefore waived the instructional minutes requirements. It is part of the legislature's current budget proposal that that waiver be granted again for the coming school year. And that would give school districts flexibility from those minutes requirements. Keep in mind, we're likely headed into an environment where at best, students will be on campus two days per week. Instructional minutes requirements are almost moot just, just from the get go. So I do think that the waiver will be granted. And I do think that we'll have an option as to how we apply the furlough.
And last thing, my understanding is, you said, you just said that you think it would be granted. But my understanding is that we still have to apply for the waiver and there's a likelihood that
if the state grants a waiver to all schools as part of, as part of, you know, legislative package, then we would not.
We don't have to individually.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. So next I have President Alper, Vice President Alper, I'm, I'm fast forwarding to next year, and then Director Leva Cutler.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing about the furloughs, Dr. Stevens. Am I right that the reason why furloughs are in tier two and layoffs are in tier three is? and layoffs are in tier three is because layoffs, classified layoffs, layoffs of teachers in, in, you know, if it comes to that, can't, can't really in any practical or maybe even legal way be done this coming school year? And that they would have to be done via March layoff notices that were issued in March of 2021 for the next school year. And so am I right that you've put, you've put layoffs into tier three, but that we should be really looking at them as essentially as an alternative to furloughs, which can be implemented in tier two? Is that, is that right, is that correctly looking at it?
That's exactly right. I mean, you know, aside, all of these things are damaging to the district and they're all awful. We're also trying to think about, you know, sort of where we are as a state and where our economy is. And that was part of the sort of value decision that we went through by enacting a furlough in tier two. Again, we would only do that if we don't get federal revenue. We felt that it was a way, you know, quote unquote, to spread the pain and to make sure that people continue to be employed as the better alternative to laying off our employees. So that's why we put it first, as painful as it is. It's directly to avoid this possibility of layoffs.
Okay, thanks for delaying the possibility, I should better say. Okay, thank you.
Director Leva Cutler?
My question is on the 10% reduction from Personnel Commission. What does that mean, a 10%? And its impact on the Personnel Commission with a budget of, but I don't know what it has.
Well, it's, that's $50,000 is 10% of its budget. So it's roughly a half million dollar budget. So we would need to engage the Personnel Commission staff to begin to develop a plan for a reduction. And so there are lots of things inside of all of our department budgets that could likely be reduced. They oftentimes include things like contracted services or things like purchases. So we haven't engaged the team yet. It's in tier two, we hope not to enact it. But we don't imagine that it's going to be a reduction in staff for the Personnel Commission.
Okay. Director Sinai, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have some more?
No, that's my last question.
Director Sinai?
Could you talk, either you or Assistant Superintendent Follonsby, on the potential impact or risk of us taking the one time only funds from Fund 20? And so you're looking to, just also to clarify, tier two includes two withdrawals from Fund 20, the 400,000 and the million? Is that, am I reading that right?
You are, yeah. They're written there twice, but that's, that's a single withdrawal of 1.4 million.
Okay, so there, I think in another chart, it showed where we started with the Fund 20 and then the, the withdrawals over the course of the last year or two. Talk to us a little bit about if there's a risk to that at all.
So, so these contributions that we're making to Fund 20 does not count towards our liability for other post employment benefits because it's not in a trust, it's not in a dedicated trust. So, so even though we're setting this money aside, when we're doing our annual audits, we cannot count this accumulation of funds towards our liability. So there's actually no, there's no harm in us spending this amount from an auditing point of view, but it does help our credit rating when we let our funders know that we're setting this money aside so that we can meet our, our post employment liability. We're kind of building a rainy day fund for this purpose. So no, it's not an actual impact to our finances, but it does help us when we're going for a credit rating.
Okay, and it's not a risk to our, our required reserve?
No, because it doesn't count towards our required reserve. And we're, we're funding on a pay as you go basis. So we, we have money set aside for that. So we're meeting our.
And money goes in every year?
Yeah, money goes in every year because whenever we run pay, the payroll, remember we reduced the rate as one of our savings, but we're still setting funds aside.
Okay, so I think it's good for the huge, as former Board Director Daniels used to say, for the thousands that are watching out there to know that we're not risking our fiscal health and that this actually, it is like a rainy day fund. And the COVID pandemic is a perfect example of how to use it. So thank you for that explanation.
Okay, so I think I'm the only person left and I have a couple of questions. First of all, of, if, looking at this slide, so is the 1.4 included in the additional transfers out of 2.9?
Sorry, let me find the right slide. I think this is the one, President Appel?
Yes. And there's that, this is 1.4 out of Fund 20. And I was following you until then you went to the other slide and the 1.4 isn't actually anywhere on that slide. I think, so it must be included either in the 3.2 from this year or the 2.9.
It's, it's here, it's on this slide, the tier two is 1.4 and on tier one?
Okay, oh, go ahead. Oh, I see, so it's right there, got it. Thank you. So I'm, I'm wondering about these furloughs because, well, you know, my, actually my wife works for the state. And so they just got word today that they have two days of furloughs. And I think that's pretty common for state employees. And so the three days for our teachers, you know, it's pretty hard, it's, you know, significant. And I am kind of wondering if you're thinking of instructional days, are you thinking that we'll close school for three days? Are you thinking that people will take them at different times and we'll get subs? Like, how are you thinking that we'll actually do that?
Well, in order to realize the savings, we would have to close schools. If we were providing subs, then we would be, you know, essentially spending. No, so these, unfortunately, they, they look like shutdowns. You know, families would experience them almost as a school holiday, but there would be no school activity taking place on a furlough day.
Got it. So I guess what I am, I think what I would recommend here is that we, we're not going to vote today anyway, but I think if I remember Superintendent Stevens, you and I have talked about this and we should make sure actually that our union, you know, that they prefer furloughs to layoffs because I do, I do wonder if like there's any TSAs that we can do without or anything like that. Not, not instructional, like not anyone who's teaching in the classroom, but you know, given that we're going to be doing this hybrid thing, I'm wondering if there are positions that are supporting our schools that maybe we won't be able to take advantage of or where we won't need to take advantage of this year.
Yeah, we, we looked very comprehensively at all of our staff positions, all of the TSA positions, both the site based positions and then the limited number of central office TSAs. We finally came to the conclusion, given the challenges that we're about to endure next year, that all of those support positions are pretty important and that it was preferable to try and save almost $2 million through this option compared to trying to lay off to achieve the same savings.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So I guess what I would suggest here is that we all think about this and, you know, we've asked for a little bit of, of more information. And then I don't know if maybe, if you could make sure in discussing, like I would imagine that our union can't actually speak for their members. This is something that they would really need their members' input on. But, you know, I, I'm, this is, you know, this is going to have, you know, a huge impact on folks. So I just, I don't know what other steps we would need to take, but maybe, I'm sure it was really difficult to make this decision. So you have to recommend this, but I'm, you know, that just seems like a lot, the three days.
We appreciate that as well. We put it in tier two as well because we're not intending to enact this until we have more information about the revenue. So we're just going to sit tight for a while. We'll wait for information about the federal revenue and state income. And if it turns out that the sort of worst comes to pass and we really are looking at the full reduction, it's at that point that we plan to be, to formally engage our labor partners.
Okay, so when we pass this, I think my, I would feel more comfortable if we put them somehow in order of how we would want the district to take these tier two supports because of, I mean, tier two reductions. Because the tier one reductions, they're going to actually, I mean, if I understand correctly Superintendent Stevens, you're gonna, you're gonna actually take those right away. The plan is to just implement those with the, with the budget that we pass for 2021. But the tier two reductions are going to wait until we see, you know, what money we get and what, what is our actual situation after the budget passes? And so. Go ahead, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
That's exactly right, President Appel.
So I would just want to put those furlough days at the bottom because that's about half of this total of 3.4 million. And so, you know, you know, at some point we might like, even if we have to do a furlough, we could like knock it down to two or, you know, or one day or something like that. So I, when we pass this, my recommendation would be to make it clear that that's at the bottom of our list. But that's just my opinion, so we can talk about it next week.
Superintendent Stevens, when do you see that this would be like July 1 or in the fall sometime?
Right now, I can't even guess. You know, I'm trying to keep up on what's going on in Washington DC with the Senate debates about federal relief for the states. You know, there's just not clear signals right now when the Senate will actually take action on any of this. And then we're, the second wild card in all of this is that we're anticipating potentially a revision in the state budget to take place in August. So I think we all ought to be prepared for a lot of ongoing uncertainty through the summer and right into the start of the school year.
Okay, well, at least, you know, you have most of the tier one reductions passed. And so I think that'll allow you to move forward.
So we, just to be clear, we will come back and ask for action from the board on tier two. And it has to be approved in order for us to submit a balanced budget to ACOE by June 30.
So I'm sorry, so tier two will come back next week for?
For, for request for approval so that we have board approved reductions that total the $8.5 million and that will permit us to submit the balanced budget. And one of our goals here is to maintain a positive certification with Alameda County as opposed to submitting a qualified budget that's not balanced.
And the approval could be conditional on?
Yeah, everything in tier two should be thought of as conditional. It's approved by the board, but will not be enacted until we have additional information about our actual revenue.
And you won't reduce it, you'll come back to us before we actually have to make these cuts, right?
There will be fair warning if it looks like, you know, it looks like we don't get the revenue. We certainly want it, we're going to engage the board and we're definitely going to engage our labor partners before we do anything at all.
Okay, so I think it might be helpful to get just a temperature check. Would that be helpful to you?
It'd be very helpful.
So maybe if people can just say, you know, I just said kind of what, where I stand on these tier two reductions. And so I think I'm going to start with you, Vice President Alper.
I'm, I'm good with them. I'm not good, but I don't have any questions or concerns or comments.
Got it. Director Leva Cutler?
I'm fine.
Director Sinai?
I agree and I like your idea of ranking them.
Director Brown?
I'm okay.
Okay, so now you, I think it looks like, you know, you, you can count on the tier two reductions. There's a couple of us who would really want to put the staff furloughs as the last resort.
I understand. Thank you.
And it's also like for you guys, for you people downtown, I understand you're trying, why you're trying to equal it out, but it's a quarter, it'll basically be five days out of, how many days usually are there? Five, you know, it's going to be one week out of four weeks that you're not getting paid, so.
You know, President Appel, we work 1,000 days a year and we'll hardly fill it.
Yeah. Okay, so now let's move on. And again, this is just going to be a presentation on the LCAP and then I guess we can have a discussion.
That's correct, thank you. So this is, we'll just again review this. This will be review for board members. It's been a number of presentations actually where we've been presenting our best thinking about managing a $512,000 deficit in our LCAP budget. So as, as are previously reviewed with the board, we are planning actually on some increased expenses to LCAP while we decrease some other expenses and then draw on one time carryover and then we would be asking for the board's permission to use $200,000 in our, in our reserve. So to go through these moves, we're proposing to move the long, we'll see coach actually off the general fund and back into LCAP. We propose to eliminate Super Science Saturday and tutoring stipends, mainly because neither of these, we think, will be permissible in the coming school year. We're proposing to close TSA related to school climate at the K8 level. That's a painful reduction, but one that we're proposing nonetheless. We're also proposing another hiring freeze. This is a restorative justice counselor at Berkeley High School that was vacated midway through the current school year. We're proposing to close student welfare and attendance position with the African American Success Project, but we're not proposing to move the funding from AASP. We would leave it right there so that doesn't realize any savings and would permit the African American Success Project to have some additional money for the expansion of its program. That particular decision is taken in light of the success of the Longfellow community and greatly increasing student attendance. And then we're proposing $77,000 to be set aside from LCAP for the COVID Equity Fund. And you'll remember, we proposed $200,000 earlier. So this $77,000 would be added to that equity fund and would provide us a great deal of flexibility to try and counter some of the problems that we imagine will come up in the current, current, coming school year. So all of these various moves together only account for a $133,000 reduction in LCAP towards the $512,000 goal. If we carry that $133,000 forward, we're then proposing to use LCAP carryover. This is the very last of our one time carryover. And then we would propose to use $200,000 of the board's $1 million LCAP reserve to meet this difference. And then I will say as an important caveat, over the course of the coming year, the 2021 school year, we're going to have a lot of important conversations to have about what I think will be the ongoing reduction to LCAP revenue. And we will likely have to make more structural changes to the LCAP budget in the next year. But this is a bridge strategy that we would ask the board to approve next week when we, when we come for an action item.
Questions?
Will we see the whole LCAP budget? Or we'll just see this, the reductions that are being recommended? Because not seeing what we're keeping and seeing just what we're cutting doesn't give me a good picture of everything.
Good point. Yes, I'm, I'm happy to forward to the board the complete LCAP budget. And if it's your preference, we can also make sure that we include that as part of next week's presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Sinai?
Thank you, thank you for all this work. You know, I really do, I mean, I know we thank you, but I know this is a huge heavy lift. Two questions or I guess requests. I would echo Director Leva Cutler's request to get the whole, the whole budget. And I know I've said this before and I know we don't have the capacity to do it in the next week, but I hope that we spend some time, again, kind of aligned with the resolution we passed last year, that we look at the data and what impact these programs that we've been funding with the LCAP are actually having on the students that are supposed to be benefiting from them. And I know there was some initial data when we first started the process and then things got, you know, COVID, you know, COVID distracted. And I think also kind of going back to the tier one discussion, it'd be great to have the high school math data on the, you know, the DNF that had been generated for the previous couple of years. Around the COVID Equity Fund, so are you saying the total fund will be 277 with 200 coming from?
ECEP.
So is your plan to come back to us or to come back to the PAC with what actually the recommendation is for those funds? Because I'm assuming it's not a slush fund, but that it will have some focus of what we want to achieve with that? Because. Because I would really like to know what we're doing with that fund.
Yeah, I I wish that I had a sort of budget for this this concept of the LCAP Equity Fund. With so many moving parts, we haven't been able to develop that. I do imagine that some portion, a small portion of that money would actually be left as somewhat flexible to meet needs as they emerge over the course of the year. And then we're thinking about a few things. So there may be elements of the Black Lives Matter Resolution that could be addressed through the Equity Fund. There could be elements of the African American Success Project also to be addressed through that fund. And then generally, we're hearing for things like tutoring for students who are struggling. We might want to do that on an affinity basis. And then we also heard a thoughtful request from Spanish speaking families that we begin to develop some Spanish language instructional videos for parents to be able to help their students navigate all of these tech resources. So those are the kinds of ideas that are at play. This fund would just let us think flexibly about some of the things we've never had to solve before.
So who who would be responsible for holding it and being accountable for it?
I'm imagining that the Ed Services Team would would ultimately administer the administer the fund.
Well, I actually think that's part of what we were talking about earlier, Superintendent Stevens. And I think that when we have that conversation next week, we can maybe start to address some of that. Because I, you know, I I think it's a really good question, Director Saini. And I. I, you know, I I had kind of, this is really, it's really great that that you've like have kind of earmarked some LCAP funds for some of that work. And, you know, we need to just, we we need to get some idea before next week about how, like, just a general idea of how much we're talking. Because then, you know, when we're when we revisit the tier one based on this conversation, that, you know, we can well know, is it all covered by LCAP? How much do we need? You know, what do we need to, what do we want to do next year? What, you know, what can we wait till the following year? So, you know, I think that those conversations are hard conversations, but they're ones that we need to have together with the budget. So I it sounds to me like some of it will be paid for through LCAP and some of it through the general fund. And I don't know, maybe some of it through ESAP. I don't know.
Yeah, I I think that's where we're trying to go in the next week of work. What we'll look to do is put together more detailed programming options to be all related to equity, both the Black Lives Matter Resolution, work that we would love to see expanded in the African American Success Project and OFI. And we'll be coming back with ideas. Some of those ideas actually might include some additional modest reduction ideas so that we could pay for some of these new investments. We just weren't quite there today to be able to present that level of thinking, but we will be ready next week.
Thank you. And I that's why I included it in the motion because, you know, that way that gives us both you you time to build your budget, but then it also doesn't close the door on that possibility because of the budget.
Yeah, we appreciate having the the second chance to talk about this.
Great. Does anyone else have any, Vice President Alper, you still have your hand up?
Yeah, just thank you. Just real quick on the COVID Equity Fund. And definitely, if you call it a slush fund, Director Saini, I agree, that doesn't sound very good. But but I do, I do think, and I generally am totally with you. You know, I don't like allocating money without, you know, understanding the purpose of the goals or the accountability. I do. I do like the idea of some flexibility here for the reason that Dr. Stevens said, because I just think there really are. I mean, there's the one, there's so much we don't know about the fall. And then one thing we do know, we know the things we don't know, but we also know the thing we do know, which is that are the kids that we're trying to support the most are going to be the ones who are most affected by the distance learning and all the other things related to the pandemic. And so we just don't know, what we don't know is exactly how that's going to play out. We know we have a little bit of experience from this, you know, semester. But it's like a guarantee that that our inequity is going to widen as a result of not being able to do normal instruction in the fall. And so I really like the idea of setting aside some money and saying, you know, we'll hold ourselves and staff accountable for spending it in a responsible manner, but but giving ourselves the flexibility to address the needs that we might not be able to, you know, pinpoint exactly right now.
Great. Oh, Director Saini, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I just, I don't have a problem with with having the pot of money available and the flexibility. But I want to know the line of accountability, and I think that that's the key point. And and what role, you know, the Office of Family Equity and Engagement has in it. And, you know, I I want to be careful that it that the uses of the fund, and this is not questioning the intent of what anybody's thinking. It's just more from a fiduciary responsibility, wanting to know that we can report back on what the impact that that fund had. You know, the Berkeley Public Schools Fund is also, you know, raising a lot of money to support students. And I want to, you know, I want to balance and leverage, you know, the resources. And there might be ways that we use that fund to leverage more funds. I just want to be really intentional about it and be accountable to it. So that's, so thank you.
I hear you loud and clear on that. And that's exactly where we want to go as well. We appreciate the extra week just to pull our thinking together to present back to you.
Great. So with no other hands up, why don't you go ahead and complete this, your presentation, Superintendent Stevens? Can I just ask a question? Do you, I'm a little unclear if, so now after this presentation, Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby is going to give us a presentation on the budget, right? Or is this the presentation on the budget? We have a discussion item that's on on the 2021 budget. And I, it seemed like this actually had a lot of that information, but I do wanted to know if that was a separate presentation.
Yeah, that that I think was more an agendizing error on our part. So Ms. Fowlesby, I believe that the full budget book is loaded into the discussion item, correct?
It is, yes.
It's like an agendizing error in your favor when we have one fewer item.
They don't usually go that direction. That's true. So yes, that next time we we are going to pull all of this together into a, you know, single action item that just sort of consolidates all the information.
I mean, I also understand, you know, we're making this, we're making agenda decisions on the week before in with these tight meetings. We're also, we're erring on the side, we're trying to err on the side of, you know, having, being able to talk about something. Okay, so go ahead, Superintendent.
Yeah, so this really is just the close. So our next meeting is on June 24th. Pardon that that sentence with no verb in it. Life right now.
Or is the end of the meeting?
And I don't know what verb I would choose if I had the if I had the option. So our next step, we're planning to do this additional thinking about both the Black Lives Matter Resolution from last week about trying to get more concrete in our thinking about potential equity strategies to particularly to be funded through this idea of the equity, the COVID Equity Fund. We're also going to plan to do some other thinking as well, and we'll come back to the board for three topics. So this will be an action item related to tier two, an action item related to the LCAP budget. And then we'll be asking for a supplemental action item related to the COVID Equity Fund and potentially some other some other adjustments. In addition, then we'll come back for the formal second reading of the budget on on June 24th. And if all of that goes well, then we will have wrapped up the budget process and we'll be on our way to submitting to Alameda County Office of Education a a balanced budget by June 30.
Yay. Is this your last slide?
That's it. That's it. So thank you again.
Building the budget process, and that would be putting the verb before the now.
That's it. And then and then when we're back in August, we'll likely start all of this work all over again.
All right.
I thought there was going to be another meeting July 1.
Well, we have one scheduled, in fact, and it may be the case that we want to keep it there. We could be finished with the budget, but we may want to, we'll work with President Appel, but we may want to keep that for another presentation potentially on fall planning. I do plan to have, well, President Appel, you and I will work to see whether or not it makes sense to do a presentation on fall planning for next week.
Yeah, I think at some meeting recently, it that came up that was going to happen at the July 1 meeting. So we could, we'll talk about it, but I think that that would be a good opportunity to talk about what's going to happen. And and we'll probably, you know, introduce some of that next week. And then we will, that's what we just talked about. And then we will, you know, we'll have a chance to really talk in more depth on the first.
President Appel, can I make a quick comment?
Did I do something else wrong?
No, I was going to praise you. I I just wanted to thank you and Dr. Stevens because, you know, we've been, these meetings every week are really tough, I think, on on everybody. But you, and there's so many huge decisions that we're making. But the way you all have structured these agendas and in the plan that you just talked about has made it, you know, really as easy as it can be for the rest of us. But but I but it, but the easier that it looks, the harder, the more work I know went into it on the, you know, behind the scenes. So I just wanted to give a quick shout out to you and and Dr. Stevens for for managing this process. So, you know, sort of transparently and efficiently and productively.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in on that one. I we've really appreciated the guidance of President Appel, just in trying to, you know, create accessible presentations and layout. Both lay out the information and then design a process that would really sort of give the board opportunities for due diligence while also making this as clear as possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all. And thank you guys for, you know, all of your brilliance. It makes it, it is, somebody mentioned it being an honor to work with all of you, and I feel that way too. So, you know, it's a great thing. All right, if there's nothing else, I do think that I maybe maybe he already said this, but I believe that Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby did upload the budget to that item. Is that where it is? Is it attached to it? Is it attached to that agenda item?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you know, if 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 I think, what is it? It's like 200 pages. So, you know, if you have a little extra time, you can read the budget. And that being said, I am now going to adjourn the meeting at 10:00. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have second opportunity for public comment?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. See, it's like a team effort. Is there anybody who wants? Oh, I see two people, Terry Taplin and then Mimi wants to speak again. I'm going to let Terry go first because, Mimi, you already spoke, so. Go ahead, Mr. Taplin.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Thank you all for your hard work. I just want to iterate what others have said about Longfellow and the facilities bond. I think that deprioritizing Longfellow contributes to a legacy of environmental racism. Historically, facilities and infrastructure in southwest Berkeley have been divested from. And I would just encourage you all to heed the strong words of the Longfellow community and equitably distribute the the bond measures on the facility. So these one was something I was really excited about, and I just hope that our students and families of color who attend Longfellow can enjoy those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mimi, why don't you finish this up?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I just wanted to comment on the LCAP budget to, I don't know that PAC feedback has been written, but I know that at the PAC meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the importance of maintaining teacher stipends. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think there was, we had $50,000 allocated to that in the past. And there's a consensus that particularly knowing that kids are, kids who are struggling are falling behind and that teachers have been effective where they have groups, etc. We think that's a great way of supporting our students. And the other thing I wanted to comment on is the giving of $70,000 to the COVID Equity Fund. I think it's a interesting concept. I don't remember this being discussed at the last PAC meeting. And I would just like to inject that I do feel that it is, in terms of how that funding is allocated, I do think that it is something that the PAC Committee should have input into. And I just wanted to make that point. And I appreciate what Director Saini said about accountability or how we go forward in that respect. But I I expect that Dr. Stevens has thought about this because he's pretty thorough. So that's, that's the end of what I have to say.
Thank you for bringing those points up, Mimi. Super important. Okay, with that being said, there's no more public comment, and it's now 10:07, and I'm adjourning the meeting. And we'll see you next week.
Night, everybody.
Good night.